30:00 PM, if we could all please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. Could the superintendent please call the roll?
Ms. Chisholm.
Yes.
Ms. Cormier.
Yes.
Mr. Lipsett.
Yes.
Mr. Mulranen.
President.
Mr. Kissel.
Here.
Uh, Dr. Wells.
Here.
Ms. Crowley.
Yes.
Out of order.
I know. It's like this cheap sheet.
I know.
Wow.
I'm on my game.
Couple months.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a pretty packed agenda, and I know the public is eagerly waiting for the question and answer, uh, sorry, the FAQ session. Um, so we'll try to speed through the items here. Do I have any action on the approval of the eight six twenty school committee minutes? Motion to approve. Okay. Wow, you guys, all right. So I have a motion on the floor and a second to approve these minutes. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes seven zero. Presentation from the chair. I want to announce to the public that the school committee voted by the majority to move the start date for the Woburn Public School students to, um, September twenty first, two thousand and twenty. This vote was taken on August twenty first, two thousand and twenty. Um, this, the rationale behind this vote was due to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education mandate to provide the teachers with professional develop- professional development prior to the start of the school year. So we indeed agreed to move the, uh, start date. In addition, the school committee endorsed the superintendent's request to send a correspondence to families, um, stating that all children at every level will now have a grab and go lunch and will not have lunch inside the buildings. The rationale behind this vote was due to the health and safety of congregating children in the building and removing their masks and eating. It became, um, not in the best interests of the children due to this health and safety crisis that we're still in. Um, so I just wanted to announce that the school committee took that action.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
So just maybe you want to give edification as to why it was an executive session because it was negotiations with unions, just to clarify.
The school committee called an executive session that day because we were in negotiation with the union on that day. So, thank you.
And this is a result, and this vote is the result of those negotiations.
And this, the vote was, came out of that executive session. Thank you, Dr. Wells.
Yep.
Um, next is the discussion on the Recreation Commission appointment. As you know, the school committee has to appoint a person to represent the school committee's interests on the Recreation Commission. Um, I, the deadline was August fifteenth. I will report that to my email, I received three applicants. So at this point, I think, not to delay the matter because we have pressing business, I think I'm going to refer it to the Personnel Subcommittee to screen and perhaps interview the candidates and come up with a plan in order to select the appropriate person. Is everyone in consensus with that?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Dr. Wells.
With such few candidates, maybe, you know, hate to do this, but just have, you know, give us the resumes.
Mm-hmm.
Give them a five-minute presentation. We talk a few questions and just vote. I don't know, I don't know if we need to send three candidates. Because then essentially what we'd be doing then is giving the subcommittee the authority to pick.
Well, you know, I think that the subcommittee could decide to do a committee as a whole, in order to have the, the whole, the whole committee there because I don't know if, since we have very pressing business, I don't know if the public wants to, um, us to take our time to do that in public session. So that's why I was referring it to the subcommittee.
Well.
Does anyone else have any feedback on that? Yes, Ms. Chisholm.
Why don't you just, if you send out the three resumes, we can do that, and then we can always make recommendations.
Yeah.
And if we do have a, a subcommittee meeting, we can always, if people want to chime in, they can do that too.
Okay, so what exactly, you want me to?
Send it to the subcommittee, give us the entire board you get through the resumes, and then we'll go from there.
Of course. Oh, yes. Oh, yes, no, I'm going to send them to everybody, but then Mike Mulranen is going to become the point person.
Right.
As personnel, and anybody have, once we see the resumes, obviously you can submit questions to the Personnel Subcommittee or interest or concerns.
Yes, Dr. Wells.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to understand what the subcommittee is going to do. Are they going to make the selection and send one candidate forward, or are they going?
I'm just trying to give it to Ms. Mulranen to be in charge of as I have other things going on. That's okay.
But I still don't understand.
So that's referred to the Personnel Subcommittee. And, you know, I, I would encourage you to involve the whole committee in, in this discussion.
Sure.
And perhaps, like I said, perhaps doing a committee as a whole.
Sure.
Madam Chairman, just as a point of order, I don't think we, you know, I know the council does that all the time, but I think, I think that there, no such thing exists.
Oh, we don't have that?
We don't have a subcommittee of the whole because the purpose of subcommittees is not to take final decisions.
Yes.
And that's the reason why we do that.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I think, I think what they can do is they can interview them, maybe make a recommendation, but I think at the, when it comes before the board, I think the board, you know, should be able to either accept the recommendation of the subcommittee.
Yes. I, I was not intending in any way that the final school committee would not vote on the, on the candidate. It's just the screening and the interview would fall on personnel.
But I think all three candidates should be viable at, when they come to the full school committee.
I'm assuming they will be viable.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay.
So, Ms. Mulranen, you can, thank you.
All up with that, will do.
Okay, so, um, the, we, we voted on the concepts of the superintendent's contract, and we all know that it's extended to two thousand and twenty-five. The language itself was just sent to the school committee today, so I believe at this point we should table that to the next meeting. But you have a copy of it from our attorney, and it's pretty much done, it just needs our signature, but I know that the school committee needs to read it carefully, so. Okay, thank you very much for that. That takes care of that. Um, I do want to make, give the committee an update on our collective bargaining. Um, we are in collective bargaining with the Woburn Teachers Association with regards to the change in the teachers' working conditions because of the moving to the hybrid model. And to date, the school committee and the administration have met with the teacher union for approximately ten hours since August twenty first. And these discussions are very productive and they're ongoing. We are steadily moving towards a memorandum of agreement. I specifically want to thank Eric Shoucan and Barbara Locke and all of the representatives for leading the union and for their professional insight and dedication to the teachers and staff. And certainly we have different points of view, but it's clear that the WTA isn't invested in the best interests of our students, and the school committee looks forward to continued negotiations with the WTA. So that's the update in that regard. And moving on to reports and presentation of superintendent and staff. Dr. Crowley?
Sure, the first item, I believe, has been forwarded to you from Ms. Callanan. It's an increase in the GPA for the National Honor Society at the Woburn Memorial High School. Um, I, I believe she was seeking to increase the GPA to a three point five, um, from its current level. And it needs to be reflected in the handbook, and therefore it needs your consent.
Okay, and everybody received, I believe, correspondence on this with rationale behind the change in the, in the GPA? Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Crowley? Mr. Lipsett?
Just one, um, just for the current class or the current students in building, how will this past year's grade be reflected in the GPA compilation? So given, given the different grading under COVID- nineteen rules, high, pass, pass, how will that be reflected in GPA?
I think the GPA froze at the time of, uh,
School froze.
School closing.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yes, Mrs. Chisholm.
I just wanted to mention that the fact that we were much lower than our surrounding communities, so we're coming closer to what they, they are. So it's not like we're, we're punishing our kids by any means, but that just so that we are now competitive to other towns.
Thank you, Ms. Chisholm, that's an excellent point. I think it's clear that we're raising the bar to a higher standard. Any more questions on that?
Make a motion to approve the recommendation as presented, Madam Chair.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, that motion passes seven zero. You could let the school, uh, school committee, let the, uh, principal of the high school know that that's been changed. High school athletics update and discussion.
So tonight, Athletic Director Mr. Duran's here to provide an update as it relates to MIAA and Middlesex League Athletics.
Yeah. I thought I was here to speak about the National Honor Society. You gonna poll point, Jim, or are you gonna use the screen? Yeah, yeah. Um, I think just starting off on crazy times, um, you know, we're just trying to get the kids out on the fields. Um, the MIAA has followed a lot of the guidelines with DESI. Um, there's still more guidelines to come out, uh, as, I, I believe, April thirty first. The athletic directors and the superintendents of the Middlesex League met last week. We had great discussions. Um, as of right now, uh, what we have presented is, um, uh, the sports to represent in the fall would be, football is out, uh, cheering would be out, um, the sports that are in play would be cross-country, golf, soccer, field hockey, swim and volleyball. Um, with swim and volleyball being on the outside looking in, uh, we thinking with inside, um, having those two sports as an inside sport would be difficult to, um, maybe, uh, perform at, at a certain rate. Um, volleyball would be, I think, there, there are some guidelines that, there are volleyball things going on right now, but in the league, we have a lot of teams, a lot of schools in the, in the, in the league that are, um, using their gyms for, for classrooms, cafeterias, um, and they have them set up already. So that, that plays into some of, uh, the volleyball issues. Swim would be difficult one just because we don't know, like, a lot of the pools are not open yet, so we don't know if we could pull that off. Um, I think the, the state has done something, in my eyes, a little crazy, but they would, they would do it, um, um, they would do it online, they would be racing against another team in another pool somewhere else. So it's just something that maybe they can get the kids in the pool, so, um, that's another sport. But field hockey, soccer, um, those would be two sports that are out there. The difference, the guidelines haven't come out for field hockey. Soccer is kind of going by the guidelines of the, the Massachusetts soccer. Um, the guidelines are pretty really strict. It probably wouldn't, like, you know, the soccer people that wouldn't think it would be soccer, but in my eyes, I think it's something for the kids to do. I mean, it's to get them out in the field, they're with their friends. Um, I just think it's going to be different no matter how we look at it, right? It's going to be different. Everything's different. Uh, golf and then cross-country. And there's guidelines for all four of those sports that would be offered, that we think we could offer. Um, we, we set up a schedule, and the schedule would be, um, would be on Saturdays, and it would start on, uh, October seventh, and we'd do Saturdays and then the two holidays, Columbus and, uh, and Veterans Day. We would have ten games, that was the schedule that we looked at. It hasn't been approved by the superintendents. It was just something that we put together that we thought would be safe for our kids. And, um, you know, would, they would practice, uh, between three and four times a week. Uh, the JV would practice twice a week, and, uh, they would play a game also on, um, a Saturday. And we would have, like, the communities, we were playing Burlington, Burlington, all their sports, cross-country, golf, soccer, field hockey, would come to Woburn on that Saturday. Now, so golf is going to be a very difficult thing to have a golf course on a Saturday. So that's going to be something that we're going to have to work on if it's not on a Saturday. Can they do it, a lot of these schools, if they're remote, could they do it in the morning on some day during school? Um, that's just some of the things that we've looked at, just if we, we can't get onto the golf courses on, on Saturdays, which is going to be very, very difficult. Running a cross-country meet at Hon Pond on a Saturday would be very, very difficult. So we're going to have to work with what we can do and do the best we can for the kids, because I think, I think they need something. I, you know, I mean, going back to school is going to be good for them, and, uh, I think just spending time with their friends and they'll, they'll adjust. They adjusted to a lot of things that they've had to adjust for in the last six or eight months, so. That's, um, a little bit of the, the spiel of, you know, I'm not, like I said, it's not approved, um, by the superintendents yet, by the Middlesex League. Um, I'm not sure how we would go about it if Matt is looking for a vote for tonight for the league, or if the league was to proceed with, uh, would I, would I, would we be approved to move forward with what we're putting out there?
So, okay.
Of course.
So, thank you, and, and so last, I believe it was last week, uh, we were on a call with the Middlesex League Superintendent and Athletic Directors, and the athletic directors really put a lot of effort into trying to figure out how to get students out, uh, in a way safely to play. Um, we did not reach any conclusion. Um, and then this afternoon, I was invited to a Middlesex League Superintendent meeting tomorrow afternoon. So, um, it's one of these, uh, issues that keep, keep changing. You alluded to guidance as it relates to soccer and field hockey that is supposed to come out August thirty first or September first, and what would that look like? So we don't know yet what, what the guidance around field hockey or soccer is, so it's tough to say one way or the other.
There, there's some guidance out there, so it would be like in soccer, and I know the soccer people are going to go crazy, but there's no corner kicks, there's no, there's no shoulder-to-shoulder, there's no, uh, contact. Uh, there'd be indirect kicks, there wouldn't be throw-ins. There's a lot of guidelines in, you know, but is it worth that? Um, of not playing because you can move it to the fall, the fall two, which they're calling, that would be the fourth season, it would be the third season, but out of the four seasons that we're trying to play, that would be the third season. That's February. February, I think, the end of February to, I think, early April. But that doesn't mean that the guidelines are going to change, right? Those guidelines could still be the same in February than they are today. So, um, you know, so that's why we're looking to try to at least get them out in the field and, I mean, if the guidelines are so stringent that it's not possible to even, um, honor them or, you know, enforce them, then we have to, uh, we have to look at other avenues.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Dr. Wells?
So has any decision been made about, you know, the locker rooms, are they not going to be used and busing?
There'll be no locker rooms, and that's why we did it on Saturdays, so the parents could drive.
Yeah.
We're still up in the air if the parents are going to be allowed to watch the games, so. That would be, you know, I think in the guidelines of Massachusetts, I believe, and I'm not, I'm just kind of speaking out of term, but I believe one person has been allowed to watch an event.
Yeah.
And there's social distance and spread out and, um, outside, so, um.
And we won't use buses either?
We wouldn't use buses on Saturdays. So it would be, you know, one, Monday, Tuesday, a practice, maybe, nothing on Wednesday. Thursday, Friday, one of the practices would be, and then a Friday, I mean, a Saturday.
And as, uh, I know there was some guidance about when practices could begin, is that the convention?
September, the, our first day of school would be, is the day right now.
Okay. And do we have enough feel, you know, to spread people, you know?
Yeah, we would be fine because we're going to lose football.
Okay.
And, um, you know, we'd have the soccer, as we don't have freshman soccer, right? So we only have the, uh, the four teams in soccer, and then we would have the two teams in field hockey.
Okay, Mr. Kissel.
You all set?
Oh, sorry, Dr. Wells, do you have any more questions?
Has the guidance said anything about what happens if, you know, somebody gets COVID- nineteen, one of the players or one of the co- does it, have they given guidance on what happens?
Yeah, I don't think we've gotten that far yet.
Okay.
Uh, but, and that's why we, we said that we would play, like, let's just say we're going to play Burlington.
Yeah.
All the teams would come to Burlington.
Okay.
So we would know within that week, okay, we play with Burlington, somebody has COVID. Now those teams wouldn't play the next week, and somebody else would take their spot. So if Woburn was going to play Belmont the following week, then Belmont would go and play whoever Burlington was going to play.
And all our students would be eligible irregardless of whether they chose remote learning or?
Yeah, so that's something actually I want, it is something that I wanted to bring to the committee's attention.
All right, okay, well done, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. Um, Mr. Kissel?
Uh, you had mentioned football and cheering are out, uh, and obviously they, those two pieces definitely work together. What is the talk? I thought I read somewhere about pushing it.
They would move to the fall, they would move to that fall, second fall, so that would be February.
Okay.
So bring your, bring your sweatshirt.
Sweatshirt, bring your shovel.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know. Lambo.
You commented on, Dr. Wells' question, how different it would look. Obviously, you know, they're striving not to have contact, soccer is a kind of a tougher one, you're, I mean, when you say contact, shoulder-to-shoulder, but obviously feet, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a foot game. Uh, would there be penalties at that point, or, I mean, you know?
Well, I think if there's, if there's, I mean, from my understanding of reading the rules, I mean, it's very difficult to even see how it works. But I think if you looked at it like more of like girls lacrosse, where you can't really bump or, you know, you have to kind of get in their way to make them move around you, and, uh, yeah, so if there is bumping, it's a direct kick, it wouldn't be, you know, and it could be the fact that it could be a lot of whistles.
Yeah, there'd be a lot of whistles out there. Um, the, you mentioned no locker rooms, I was at the smaller venue, uh, Holland Arena the other day, with a three-on-three little kids hockey, and they, they weren't, you know, really in the locker room, but they were just piled in the hallway, getting dressed and all that. So we said no locker rooms, we saying no.
They wouldn't be inside, we would, they would come dressed and they would go onto the field, and then there would be social distance.
Because they were saying no locker room, but the kids were just all over each other in the, the little alleyways.
Yeah.
And we searched up, like, no buses, I think John covered most of my stuff, and the parents and fans, the, the potential that they will not be allowed.
We're hoping to have one, one, uh, family member able to come and watch, uh, their student athlete.
Okay. I think there was something else in the comment. Oh, and other communities. There are some that may just say, we don't want anything to do with this, and, and obviously you work out the schedule based on that. But, you know, Burlington just says, no, we're fully remote or something like that, so our kids aren't even going to be in school, we're not going to be doing sports. Uh, how are you?
I think we got a lot of good feedback from the superintendents, and that was one of our big things, that reason why we wanted to have a meeting with the superintendents, because it's something in, I don't know how many years I've been here, but we've never met with the superintendents, like, as a group. And, um, it was a great meeting, but if we went to that meeting and they were saying, it's not possible that this is going to even think about happening, we wouldn't have pursued it.
Yeah.
But we had a great feedback from all the superintendents about, you know, wanting to get out there and wanting to get their, um, student athletes, athletes on the field. Um, and we talked about all the certain things that would possibly could come up.
And, you know, I know if pro sports have had that asterisk year based on shortened season and all that, I mean, is that something that?
It would be a league, we'd have a league title, uh, we'd have that, I mean, just something for the kids to play for, we would have a league title for, for every sport. And, uh, we would just play the Liberty Schools, which are the, uh, the Belmonts, the Winchesters, so we would play them twice. Um, and, you know, in the sports that go twice around. Track, I mean, uh, cross-country, and, uh, we'd go just the one time around, they would have, I think, five or six meets. Um, and we'd have to try to figure that out, we might give them a break in between their, uh, their schedule.
And, and maybe to Dr. Wells' point, uh, for, for the GPA and the, um, National Honor Society, obviously there's some requirements for athletes to participate.
Mm-hmm.
So how would that change if it's kind of a different, different grading schedule?
Um, I'm not sure I understand the question. They don't need a three-five to.
What's that?
I think grading stays, you know, it's big for me.
Yeah, maybe, yeah.
The grading will stay.
Okay.
Across, the, the same, as, as always, the same report card.
Okay.
Same grading, teachers will be responsible to grade based on the work in school and the assignments outside during the roll time.
Okay, and attendance, same thing?
Assessments, yeah.
And obviously we're taking attendance remotely and so on?
Yeah, attendance would be taken.
Okay, so it would be on the same level.
Yeah, that would be, you know, that'd be something difficult that we would, we would try to follow up. I'm not sure how it would be translated to the, the secretaries about how, uh, they're doing attendance. Um, I would imagine that there's going to be attendance, and the attendance will be sent to the secretaries, and they send out a sheet. And all coaches, most coaches, I shouldn't say all, most coaches look at that attendance sheet to make sure that the kids are there.
So they have to wear a shirt that's tied on the computer?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. Just from the waist up.
All right, thank you.
All right, Ms. Chisholm.
Uh, for cross-country, um, those events of the meets, and they start out with a hundred kids, shoulder-to-shoulder.
Mm-hmm. So there's a, there's a criteria in that, so they have, there's only twenty-four can start at a time. So they might have, they have to be, they have to have a mask on.
Run the whole house in a mask?
Uh, that is not, that is not said. What happens, what I've seen in a cross-country meet with, with what has happened is they all get up with their mask, and then when they say go, they all take their mask off and they leave it at the. And then when they say go, they all take their mask off and they leave it at the, at the starting line. So left out, somebody picked that up, yeah. So, and then there would be, you know, 24 at a time. And whatever we had to do to social distance them and let them go off at different times. So that's why, I mean, it would be very difficult on a Saturday morning at home form to have.
Close it down for that long of people there that?
And we might have to, we might have to cut down, you know, there might only be varsity, right? So, and then we run JV after and kind of split it up as best we could.
And like with parents, I know that one of the things that the governor and the mayor was, was saying, we don't want anybody singing anymore. So if parents are there and they're yelling, are we going to say we can't yell? I mean, I?
That would be nice.
Yeah, I know.
Maybe keep a mask on and have some duct tape.
Even like when they're cheering and yelling, I just.
Yeah, I don't know, but I mean, if they're spread out and, you know, we're going to have to, as athletic directors, we spoke about that, that we're going to make sure we have to, if they're going to be allowed, people are going to have to be socially distanced.
Have you heard from parents and kids, students about this?
I've heard more from the kids than I have to the parents. And I would imagine if, you know, parents would, they would probably call if they, you know, had thoughts. I know that everybody wants to get on the field. There's a lot of things that are out there that are not true. And there's probably a lot of things out there that are true. And there's probably a little bit in between. But I think, I think we're all looking to get the kids out in the fields and safe. You know, let them, you know, is it going to, it's not, it's not going to be what they want. But what do we have right now that what we want, right? I mean, you guys are talking about, how long you've been talking about trying to get kids into school safe, right? So I think this is the least of you guys' worry. But I think it's a big part of what they've missed out on so far. And if it's something, it's better than nothing.
Because little league games have been going on.
Yep.
If the box.
Well, you can go to New Hampshire and play full-fledged tackles. So, I mean, you know, does that make it right? I don't, I'm not sure, but.
I hope that some sort of normalcy can resume at some point sooner than later.
Yep.
So kids need it. We all need it. And we need to see reality coming back to life again. So I hope it works. Jim need from us tonight, though?
I think, do you want to clarify, Dr. Crowley, and then Mr. Moren has some questions?
No, I might just more of a comment to Jim. Obviously, whatever we choose, whatever route we go with the student athletes, it's still important that the parents know they still have to do that student ID, family ID system and get into the system so that, you know, if and when a decision is made, that kind of paperwork stuff is already in the pipeline so we can get these kids, like you say. That's what you're doing in a normal situation. You do the family ID, the student ID, you do your physicals, you do your check-ins, and you're eligible to play. So as long as the parents and the student athletes are aware of that, regardless of when, where, how we do it, that's one less thing to worry about that we have to, you know, hold the student backwards. So just add that to your list of notes when you go out to public side, wherever we do.
Mr. Moren? So, go ahead, Dr. Crowley.
Yeah, so I think really that the school committee tonight might make two decisions. The first is, if a student opts for the virtual academy, are they eligible to play? And the second is, if the district were to go to full remote, for whatever reason, would we continue with sports? Those are the two decisions that could be made tonight. Like I said earlier, we're going to have a meeting tomorrow afternoon with more information as it relates to specific sports, presumably. We could table those decisions or we could, you know, make them, make them tonight, so.
Okay, Dr. Crowley. Does the committee have what it needs to make these decisions tonight?
I think we can make the decision on the first one. I'd like to wait a little bit on the second one, maybe.
Okay.
So I'd make a motion that we allow any student, any Woburn student participating in the virtual academy will be allowed to participate in sports.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On the motion?
Yes.
I guess it goes to Jim, perhaps the superintendent. How do you set a priority? You've got a kid in the schools, in school, doing the hybrid, and you've got a student doing the academy.
But it's still a Woburn student.
Still a Woburn student. Is there going to be a tryout? Is there a, I just, how do you?
Well, there's still going to be a tryout, right? So, you know, there's a lot of teams in the league that are remote, too. So there's, there's a lot, I mean, there's, in our, I believe, Reading is starting off remote. I believe Lexington now is starting off somewhat remote. I believe Belmont, there's a bunch of teams in our league that are remote. Hollington, so, you know, they're doing it. I don't, I don't, what's going to be a tricky part is going to have trials. Because you might have kids that don't play, you know, let's say, football or cheerleading. They might go out for another sport. So the numbers have to be, if the numbers are 100 kids trying out, we're going to have to split those up into trials. Like, you can only have 24 to 25 kids on the field at one time. So, you know what, there's, our kids have been at the high school every night. You know, soccer group, football group, field hockey, you know.
Boys hockey?
Nah, no, hopefully not. Hopefully not at the rink, you know, so. But just, they've been working out, and they've been doing the right things. Now, they're already in groups, and they've been trying to stay in their own little groups, so, which is really good. So I do, you know, I mean, that's, everybody's doing, I think, remote and non, I think it's.
Mix, match, everything.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion to permit virtual academy students to play sports in Woburn. Any more comments on that motion? I just want to point out, just as a neutral person, that you would be not permitting one group of students to participate in Woburn Public Schools activities. So just keep that in mind. All right.
And that's an option that we offer parents. It's not like these parents decide all alone to exit the school. It's for something we allow them to do.
And just for clarification, what's the understanding about homeschool students? Aren't they allowed to anticipate?
Yes, exactly.
Yes.
So that's what I was going to say. They do have.
These are Woburn students, they should have all the possibilities of any student.
Okay, so any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Virtual academy students will now be able to participate in sports program.
We should just put the other issue on the table. Maybe the superintendent can update us at the next meeting after this.
And what was the other issue?
About whether, if Woburn goes virtual, do we still allow sports to continue?
Yes, if we go virtual for non-executive power from the governor reasons, right?
So in other words, the state is allowing the local school committee to decide whether sports stay in play?
And did we, do we need to make a decision on the record as to whether or not we're permitting sports? Right now?
Not yet, we're not there now.
We're not doing that now. Okay, great.
That's why I think this would be a limitation on when sports could occur.
Yes.
So I think we'd have to vote on that. And so we can decide at the next meeting with the superintendent's input. We can either make the decision ahead of time or we can put it off until we have to make it. That's the other thing.
Absolutely, yes. Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to, well, do we want to do, do we want to move out of order for subcommittee reports?
Thank you all set.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Duran, appreciate that.
Get on those dugouts, everyone.
Yeah, almost there.
Okay, so do I have a motion to move out of order to hear subcommittee reports? Or do we want to move to the superintendent's presentation?
I think a motion we move for subcommittee reports out of order, Madam Chair.
No second? So we'll now be hearing subcommittee reports. I believe we have Mrs. Chisholm's.
Finance.
Finance, and we have Ms. Cormier's SSA. Do we have any more minutes? Okay, so, Mrs. Chisholm, when have you ready?
I didn't have my minutes, I'll get some, but I will just, that we, we met on Tu- Tuesday? Tuesday, 8:25 at 3:30 in the afternoon via Zoom. And we had, we talked about the diaries with this superintendent Crowley joined us at the very end just to make sure we wrapped up correctly. And we had Bob with us, the school committee members, Colin, Paul Meara, and Goodsett, Dr. Wells, and myself. We talked about the tech devices being stuck in customs. Is there any update on that? And we, anything good on that, or?
Just to be clear, we ordered enough devices for all students in late June. I think there's supply issues as well as customs issues, so they're slightly delayed. I know Jen Judkins, our tech director, is in contact with our sales rep. And I will provide updates as soon as they're available.
Okay, we did go over the bills. The warrant, first warrant was $1,468,561.93. The second warrant was $59,220.2. Warrant three was $407,485.03. Warrant four was $19,545.91. And we have a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the, Mr. Bill?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor? A motion passes seven zero.
And we have decided that we sent the questions to Patty and to Bob prior to the meetings. So that gives them time to get, so we're not tying up administration for longer times for the subcommittee meeting. So it seems to be going, you know, very well as far as that goes. So I did with the minutes, I forwarded the questions that had any answers. So they'll be attached to the minutes, so we'll have those on here, too. And then we did, we talked about the staff, the teachers not returning to school with the effect on the budget being that if we get to hire long-term subs, that becomes a need. So we didn't have a count on that, thinking that still the teachers have time to come back and come back or.
We're working through that right now.
Okay, because that was just one of the things we were a little concerned about, the budget for that purpose. And then in the discussion on hiring the summer help for HR, we didn't want it or wasn't needed, especially this year. But just given one of the same offices that we do for Dave Duckley, that it comes like a Woburn person that we just know in budget block, just so that we know. But I'm sure that that was something that came up that was in dire need for all the things that would have to be done this year. So then we have talked about the lunch, debt is down $28,000 for 160 students. And this reduction was due to the hard work of Patty McKinnon. And I know that she's, this has been something she's working very hard on. And but at the present time, we've realized that the families, not only that are suffering prior to, a lot more families now are suffering with job loss or the possibility of losing their job. So we just didn't want those to go after the collection agencies on these families at the present time. So that, but $28,000 is not a bad deal at this time. We did discuss the balance of accounts, and we questioned that we have a close ID kept on some of the accounts that went over. And will be updated as those go along. We did return $569,000 to the city because of the shutdown. But that's, you know, we really didn't have control over that. But the bus contract has been signed, but the city solicitor and Knox suburb's lawyers are still working on that at the present time, so we can iron that out. But hopefully, I don't think there's any update on that at all.
So just for clarification, Mrs. Chisholm, you indicate that that contract has been signed. We don't know that the contract has been signed. Both, both sides have been working on some paragraphs and some, some issues.
Okay.
So I don't know that it is absolutely signed at this moment, but both sides are working toward that.
We will have difficulty with buses, though.
I don't, I can't imagine. Mr. Devine has been, I've been in contact with him, and he's been very accommodating, and he's prepared to go.
And we talked about the USDA has approved to continue through September 30th on the first day of school for the free lunches. So we're hoping that that maybe even gets extended further out. So that it would be a lot easier for the grab-and-go. We don't have to worry about collecting monies and all that sort of stuff. And we adjourned at 3:59.
Thank you, Mrs. Chisholm, and thank you for the administration for that. Thinking about the financial needs of our families at this point. And, Miss Chisholm, thank you for those comments regarding our families during this difficult time. I'm going to reverse myself and go back to personnel subcommittee, which I refer the recreation screening in thinking about what Dr. Wells said. And I think I'm going to ask the chair, Michael Moren, of the personnel subcommittee, to do the schedule and the screening of the resumes, reach out to the candidates, and schedule them for a full meeting after thinking about Dr. Wells's comments. Otherwise, these folks would be kind of interviewed twice. So I think it should come directly to the school committee. If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Moren, getting in contact with the candidates and scheduling that. For the, that will take that off my plate. And, yeah, okay. So, thank you, Dr. Wells. I want to say on the record that you were right. I agree with you.
I'm getting that clip. That's going to be playing at my house every.
And it's on my plate. It's a win-win. All right.
He doesn't hear the two R's.
Let us just take a moment. All right.
You can't see the smile.
Okay, so we're all set with that. Everyone understands that. Okay. Ms. Cormier, student and services, I'm sorry, student service and achievement subcommittee minutes.
Yes, so we met on Friday, August 7th. And attendance was myself, Dr. Balsari, Maureen Ryan, Ellen Crowley, Mike Moren, Patricia Chisholm, Alyssa Meltow, and Julie Cotton of CPAC. We started at 9:00 AM. For an SSA update, the William James interface has received, had received by that date eight referrals. The next board's report will be in September. We were expecting an uptick in referrals due to COVID. And there will be a review in professional development for making sure that teachers know how to refer when we come back to school. The equity subcommittee, safe return to school plan overview. We talked about ELL. We've continued now to talk. We actually had a meeting today. But there was a conversation about remind, using 90 languages for email, text, and voice calls for information for parents. There were social emotional learning surveys going out to students with optional for staff. And as of 8/6, there were 400 families that reported they'd have difficulty with childcare if we were in full remote. There were plans for teacher support, including tap-in and tap-out from TCIS. Again, the trauma training during the nine-day training, setting up learning environments to acclimate the students to the changes, relationship mapping, which I think we mentioned last time, identifying kids that need a strong relationship with an adult. Individual counseling will take place based on the family comfort, conditions of comfort. They'll continue to work with students towards their counseling and learning goals. The code 336 renewal has been delayed. That's used for off-school hours counseling for weekends, vacations in summer. And we discussed the bark monitoring student accounts that I know, Dr. Balsari, as we recently mentioned, that sends an alert to Rosemary Dunham when certain words that are concerning are on student accounts. Again, looking to provide family support, attempting to provide some oversight during remote learning, which brings the question of meeting outside versus at school and increasing, you know, contacts. And the sped update, Maureen Ryan, as always, is very busy. We discussed the circuit breaker, tiered focus monitoring, all the testing that needs to be done when we return. And it's been found that remote testing is more accurate than doing it in person with masks and social distancing. So that's something to keep in mind. A procedure manual for consistency throughout the district, preview days for cohort C, unusually high numbers for preschool this year. Early intervention will stop servicing on October 15th. It has been on hold since March of 2020. And we discussed, you know, what's going to happen if kids, this was a question from CPAC, if they're not following the protocols for masks and things. They don't want, obviously don't want kids to get in trouble. So we discussed, you know, what the, sort of the steps would be that were not punishments. And we adjourned at 10:32 AM.
Thank you, Ms. Cormier. Any questions for Ms. Cormier? Okay, Mr. Kissel, I think I skipped over you. Did you have policies?
I did, yeah. We've had some policies on the table. We need to release them. Again, we were really late the last meeting, so we pushed it off to this meeting. I thought it was going to be on the agenda, but it can be, we're just releasing them, so.
Of course, yes.
So I need a motion to release these four policies.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, I was going to read it, but, from the table, it's, there it is. Okay, so I make a motion, oh, somebody needs to make a motion to accept them? All right?
Yep, okay, all in favor?
All in favor?
Yep, yep. Motion passes seven zero. They're off the table, Mr. Kissel.
We do need the names of the policies.
Yes.
Yeah, when we vote on them, we need them.
Yeah, okay. So we have crowdfunding, GBEBD, educational equity, which is JBB, public comment, which is BEDH, and JJE, which is fundraising activities in person as opposed to crowdfunding online.
Thank you, Mr. Kissel.
Months and months and months to read them, I believe.
And your subcommittee, your subcommittee reviewed these.
Yes. Yes.
And you're recommending that the School Committee adopt them.
I make a motion to tell we accept them and then add them into the manual.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, that motion passes. Those policies will be added into the manual.
There are a couple of other policies we're going to be working on. Dr. Baldzari may have mentioned them as well. One that has a little, little quicker than, well, actually, one on masks, I believe, he'll talk about briefly tonight. Also a Title IX policy that needs a little bit more.
There's a lot of work around that.
Quicker action on that one, so.
Would you like me to talk about the face, the face covering policy now?
Yeah, that's going to be appropriate. Now, Ms. Dr. Baldzari.
So, Ms. Carley, I did leave the, did they have it now handed out?
Yes. Does everyone have the mask policy? Okay. Can you tell us the steps? I know you're going to, but just make sure you tell us the steps in which this was developed.
Okay, so MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees did offer to districts a model policy. I took that policy, I certainly, I went through it, and it was deficient information regarding the dress code aspect of a face covering. Now, we do have, for our students' dress codes, we do have, you know, statements about not having moved gestures, things that are offensive to others, things that depict drugs, alcohol, tobacco. So this policy does contain language to support that the face covering should be respectful of the learning environment. After I drafted the policy, I brought it at eleven AM this morning to the Student Services, the Equity and Student Services Subcommittee that we established for creating the plan to reopen schools. We went through it using the screen share, and edits were made to the document during that meeting. At two PM, this policy was brought to all the principals of the district, and a couple more edits were made to the document, which brings you to what you see here tonight. You know, basically what this policy does when the School Committee votes it is it gives the administration the ability to set kind of protocols in the district that support all students wearing masks. The original MASC policy stated that masks were required for students who were in first grade and beyond. We felt strongly, as we have been speaking with the teachers association, our conversations are really solely focused on the safety and well-being of our teachers. And what that means is that all of our students should be wearing face coverings. Now, we understand that for children who are very young, that there will be an educational aspect to it at their age, and we will certainly cover this in professional development with our faculty during our first nine days. We spoke to principals today about creating a mask culture at their schools, the policy that you see before you as chief to it, states the expectation, and it also states what happens if a student does not, you know, have their mask on, that they could actually be removed from the learning environment and required to go in remote learning because this is a public health and safety issue. So on the other side of this, what we want to do is we want to create a mask culture, and what that means is that we're going to get correspondences going to our families so that we can encourage students, young students, wearing masks at home, and then they go out into the, into the community. We also are going to do things in our schools to support mask-wearing. One idea that we talked about today was, you know, how people, you see mask signs everywhere, you're required to make, wear masks. Some of them look like no trespassing signs, and others are doctored up to, you know, meet, you know, the colorful or what have you for our school environment. So one of the things that we talked about was the potential of the students actually making the signs to support mask-wearing, so that when those signs are in their hallways or in their classrooms, that they actually have ownership of this policy or ownership of our requirement. Ernie Wells suggested that there even be some type of a contest for mask-wearing signs in the elementary schools. So the principals are starting to think about the educational aspect of, of mask-wearing. We, you know, obviously, we want the kids to wear masks so that we're safe and so that they're safe, but we also want them to learn the value of wearing a mask when they're in the community so that they're safe when they're not with us. So this is also a learning opportunity for our students. This policy, as it's written, you know, it states that there are exceptions to the rules, and it states what those are, but it's also pretty firm in its language that with, you know, aside from those exceptions, that it is our expectation that our students are wearing masks. I, I did send this to, to Eric Shucan, Barbara Locke, June Beington, after the principals' meeting. I think didn't, nobody has gotten back to me on it, but I did share the, with them, you know, pre-being presented to you. Barbara was in our Subcommittee for Equity and Student Services. She was not in attendance today, and naturally, she wasn't in attendance because she was with us in this room right up until almost twelve o'clock, so there's only so much, you know, that we could do. But it, it has gone through some channels that are reflective of, you know, all of us who work in the, in the district. And I present it to you tonight for any questions, the comments that you may have, and it would be very helpful for us to have this sooner than later so that we can begin the process of creating that mask culture of which I speak.
Thank you, Dr. Baldzari. Dr. Wells?
Yeah, so I think the one thing we may have to think about is, because it says school grounds, especially, you know, we're talking about potentially people coming to witness sports events. Somewhere, we're going to have to put signs so that people walking onto the grounds will know that, because that's sort of a little different than a lot of places where, you know, you go to a store, it's when you get in the store, it's not when you're, so we probably want to clarify that with the signs and so forth.
You want that stated in the policy?
No, it's in the policy, but we have to have some kind of signage, because people aren't going to expect that, because you're not seeing that in a lot of places.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Mrs. Chisholm?
One of the things that concerns me, that we've been telling parents that kindergartners, we're not going to have to do this in first graders.
Yeah.
I just see a little pushback on that, and that makes it me a little nervous to do that. I mean, I think that once they get into the building, they're used to it, but I think that if some kindergarten is going to be stressed to begin with, as we all know, first few weeks of school for kindergartners, kids probably don't stop crying and be nervous to begin with.
Yeah.
And if it's not pushed at home, and all of a sudden we're making this kid put something on his face, and then we say, okay, he didn't comply, he's three days, now he's going remote. I don't think we can punish kids for that. I just, I would not approve of somebody doing that to little pumpkins. I mean, they're little kids, this is a terrible thing, it's a scary thing. I just, I could not approve that. I mean, maybe by a month into the school, they might get into this, but all of a sudden say that some parent, you're going to have your kid go to school for two days, no, they're not. And now you have to change your whole plan again. It's, I mean, we can go back and forth in science where the kids take it or not and carry this environment around, but I just think that we're just, I think we should leave it to be second grade, and maybe by the time they will go along, but.
Ted, my only concern with that, oh, a couple of concerns with that. We do want, we do understand there's an educational aspect to it. I don't think that any of our principals are going to eject, you know, five or six-year-olds from the learning environment for something that they may not understand yet, and we do want to educate them to do that. But part of this policy is a message to our faculty and staff, who we are really hopeful will be ready and willing to return to the physical, you know, teaching and learning environment. So we did this to say that, yes, of course, we understand their developmental age, and we're always respectful of that, that's what we're experts in, and that's why, I mean, you know what happens in our schools. But, you know, we do want to hold, our recommendation to the committee is to hold that line and say, you know, the principals will make individual decisions based on those students, and we give them the latitude to do that in the policy. But if we were to say that masks are not required for kindergartners or first graders, and they came in in large numbers without masks, their teachers may be in a position where they're uncomfortable and feel unsafe in their working environment. So the policy is covering both the safety of our kids and the safety of our staff.
I still disagree with that.
Okay, well, that's it, right, Ms. Chisholm? Mr. Kissel?
We mentioned, you know, on school property, we're doing things a little different here, which would obviously be, you know, we're having the kids on, you know, their faces on the screen, whether the teacher's seeing it, whether the whole class is seeing them and all that. Is that mask and/or, it's off-topic a little bit, but dress code transferred to like an online situation? So if someone is just wearing a mask, even though they probably don't have to at home, but they just want to, because it might be one of the things at the top of your list of, not derogatory necessarily, but just, just different gestures. Can we, how do we enforce that if it's through online?
That, you know, that to me is more, that's not a, this, this policy is about the safety of our staff, the safety of our kids. What you're asking about is more about a behavioral issue that may take place online. So I think Wendy might have, you've probably addressed student behavior online.
We have not. It's something that we obviously will need to do.
Yeah, because I mean, face coverings are free of language or images, depict cigarettes and so, so if a kid just decides to have a pack of Marlboro, you know, graphic, and that wouldn't be allowed in school, but he's online and he's home and he's just, again, doesn't need the mask, but just thinks, hey, you know, it doesn't say that, or the parent says, no, you can do whatever you want. Or, you know, obviously, again, off-topic is the dress code at home as opposed to what you can't, or, what's that? Or the, the view that we're seeing behind that student as well, whether it be in their room, and there might be things on their wall that we don't have control over. So, I mean, that's something that we probably need to think about, you know, obviously, we can ask them to put a virtual background up, but if they've got something in their room and that's what they're working on it, how do you tell them to take the stuff off the wall?
We may have encountered some of those things from March to June, particularly at the high school level, and none of those incidents have made their way to, to my office. I haven't heard of a student being suspended from, you know, online learning and such. So my, my supposition is that Ms. Callenann's handled it, and if we've gone three months without it, fifteen hundred students today, that maybe they have something in play already that we can present.
But we never had a rule, and rules are made to be broken, so, you know, once somebody knows that, they might say, hey, I'm going to push it because they're saying in school, and I'm going to be at home, and they can't tell me what they have on my wall. The other piece that I know to Ms. Chisholm's comment about, you know, the younger kids, I mean, obviously, you know, we're hoping the parents are going to get the kids kind of geared to going back and, you know, obviously being a little more apt to wear their masks and, you know, the hugging and all that, so, you know, it would obviously be a, I'm sure the parents will try their best, but to get the kids geared up towards that so that they are more prepared at school for wearing masks and/or just social distancing and so on and so. Probably trying to make sure it starts at home somehow, but.
And I think, as you know, children two and up need to have masks out in public now, so they are wearing them. It's not, you know, unless they're just not going out.
But they're not wearing them for four and a half hours.
Correct, and there are built-in mask breaks and opportunities to remove a mask for snack. Those things are, are in place, and students can request, and teachers will handle that. Similar to what you just raised, you know, I see it as a classroom management issue initially, and, you know, referrals can be made if it's a high school-level student, and it can be dealt with as, as those things arise, but I don't see it, as Dr. Baldzari mentioned, as like an overwhelming concern.
Yeah, no, and it doesn't take many to become an expert.
Correct.
And then the other piece lastly is, is just in general in classrooms, it's been, you know, you see them around, different postings, so the teachers have made it more of a fun environment, you know, with the, making their desks into cars and things like that, and I'm sure the teachers will do a great job, but that's kind of an important piece too, because you're right, when the kids are little, they're just getting here for the first time, and they're not seeing the smiles, they're not seeing the gestures that they would normally, you know, and be able to kind of feel comfortable with that, so just, I'm sure it'll all be taken care of, but.
We do have masks for the.
That are clear.
The clear ones, yeah.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you.
All right, Mr. Kissel. Ms. Cormier?
I just wanted to point out to Ms. Chisholm's point, the Safe Return to School Plan, it's a couple of weeks old now, it does say that all students will be wearing masks. I don't know how close, I think a lot of parents have gone pretty closely with a fine-toothed comb through this, because they have a lot of questions, so they, they are aware, it's not like we're dropping this on them. It's still a month away, and they can, you know, foster that culture at home, where we, you know, maybe we wear it for an hour for a week, and then we wear it for two hours to practice, and we make it fun, and we support it. I think that, you know, it's better safe than sorry.
Thanks, Ms. Cormier. Mr. Hupsett?
So just to the portion regarding violations of policy, I mean, first of all, I mean, we're in the middle of a public health crisis, so I really appreciate the extension of this for all students, for the safety of staff. I'm wondering, and we've talked about this a little bit before, but are there plans to do any kind of additional training with staff dealing with how to best handle potential violations, understanding that all students and staff may be in the middle of a very stressful situation in the return to school to make sure that, that conflict over masks doesn't escalate or doesn't become sort of something that takes a bit of pressure?
I think that's a great question, and this gives me an opportunity to just one more time talk about the collaboration that we have going on with the WTA. One of the topics, one of the agenda items that we will have in our conversations, and it's actually going to be next week, is teacher expectations in the new model. And, you know, we are coming to, you know, tentative agreements in our, in our conversations, but we're also, the real thing that's happening is we're talking about our practices, and even though they're not things that would actually be in an MOA, they're things that we are doing as a result of our conversations and collaboration. And I, I do, I do believe that that topic is going to come up, and the good, we have the good fortune of nine days of professional development review of this. Thank you.
Hupsett? Any more questions?
Still in policy, there, right?
Yes.
Okay, so it was just on the mask, I just wanted, there's a couple of other topics.
So are we putting this on?
I think we should vote on this.
I have a couple of comments.
Yeah, I, I, hold on. I, I think we should vote on this because, I know it didn't go through policy, but I think we should waive those rules and, and vote on, and vote on this because parents are going to have, they want to know this before they make their decision regarding their decision for the school year, so, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if I could, Madam Chair. It's just, thanks again this morning, Dr. B, excellent presentation for Woburn. Obviously, you look to our agency, and perhaps the superintendents have a different version of it, Desi probably has a different version of it, Department of Health has a different version of it, but like you stated, the, the teachers in our buildings wanted it. We're looking at the general safety of all students, staff, across the board, and Patty, you're right, the youngsters, and I heard from Mike today, you know, it'll work into the training indicated over the ten days of training. Parents will have to do it. You know what I was hoping for, Mike? I was looking for something like the governor has. The kids, you have to wear their mask to get to class. They take their mask off, they put it in their desk, they learn, just like you go in a restaurant. You put your mask back on, and you go back to the, to the next class, and you sit at your desk, and you do your work. Maybe down the road, Woburn schools will get, you know, a little looser, I guess you could call it, a little less lenient. Is this strict? Is this hardcore? Certainly is, but I think you said it over and over, Mike, we've been saying it, we've been hearing it across all kinds of channels. We're in a health crisis, worldwide health crisis, and right now, this is the way we're going to deal with it. Until such time, we are told otherwise, I guess, I don't know, I just, it's, it's like I want to say, just wear your mask till you get to Miss, Miss classroom, take off your mask, listen to the teacher, and put it on, and go down the hall to the next class. I would love to see something like that down the road, but, you know, if this is what we're going to have to do.
So Mike, you have, the good thing is, and we stated in here, that the policy will remain in place until it's rescinded by the School Committee. If, if there are changes, the School Committee also has the authority to amend it.
Okay.
You know, so, so we can, we can be flexible, you know, as you're going to be flexible tonight in the suspension of the previous rules on policy.
And I think it's somewhere here too, it's, it's still building-based. You know, the principal in that building will know that child, will know that family, will know their circumstances, and they'll work with that family. It's not straight and narrow, this is the way it's going to be. I mean, it's going to, it's here, we have something to go by, but I'm sure it'll be worked through your training from the principals right on down to the staff members in the building, you know, custodians, you know, cafeteria, whatever you want to call it, everybody's on the same page, starting day one, so. I think I'm fine with it, it's, you know, it's a start, just like Mr. Duran said. just like Mr. Duran said, it's a starting point, and now we got to do something.
Okay, Ms. Loretta. Ms. Cormier, further comments?
Just, do we need to make a motion to suspend, to suspend the rules, to vote on this tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to make, yes, but I'm just going to go back to Dr. Wells, and then we'll do that.
I just wanted to comment that, you know, as mentioned, this is a state law, and schools, you know, when children come into the school, there's a lot of behavior modification. Most kids, you know, when they first come, that's the first time they have to sit still for long periods of time. This is just, you know, another part of, aspect of behavior modification to fit requirements for the education thing. So I think, you know, people have been doing this for years, with having students sit in one place and relax and pay attention. So this is just another aspect of it. And so I think for safety reasons, I think, you know, it's well-founded, you know, this seems to be the best protection against getting infection. And so I'll, I'll support it, you know, and see where it goes from there.
Thank you, Dr. Wells. I think Ms. Cormier was going to make a motion just as...
Basically the same, the same, I was going to just say, you know, some kids don't like to wear seatbelts. Has to be done by helmets, but we get there.
Thank you, Ms. Cormier. Okay, do I have a...
I'll make a motion, we suspend the rules?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that motion? All in favor? Okay, so we're going to suspend our normal rules, given that this policy was developed through a subcommittee in this emergency situation that we're in. Do I have a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion to approve this policy as written.
Okay, and we have a second. Any discussion on the motion?
Madam Chair, on the hall, the superintendent intends to get, obviously, you're going to address a couple of things later in tonight's meeting, but between yourself and Dr. B., getting the word out, you know, whether it's individually emails to families or on the school website, so that they know, as Dr. Wells indicated, we, we want this day one. So just get the word out.
It will be communicated to families, both at the district and school level, but it's helpful to have a policy set that, that is clear. It's going to be amongst many protocols that go out to families as it relates to returning to school.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No.
Okay, that motion passes, six to one with Pat Chisholm, nay. Okay, great.
I just wanted to briefly thank the administration for considering the mask-wearing as a social, emotional piece, and, and really putting into the behavioral aspects of, of kids, and I think that that's going to help. And I appreciate everybody that was on your subcommittee and thought a lot about this, because at the end of the day, we're requiring students to wear things on their faces, and that's a big deal. And so thank you for all of the time and consideration putting into this from your whole leadership team. So, thank you. All right.
Motion to return to regular order, Ms., Madam Chair.
All.
Yes, of course.
Because I know we were going to talk. There was also, I, we're going to talk about, so we can probably think about this as part of the discussion, maybe the administration already thought, virtual learning, obviously, you know, online piece, the truancy changes in a policy?
Yes.
Truancy issues, you know, in, in person, so how that will be affected by the virtual learning, and what is truancy, being offline because your modem went off, or your dog ate your computer wire, you know, all these different reasons why people aren't on that day, and there's a truancy obstacle. So do you need to talk about that, Title IX?
Title IX is...
Sooner than later on that.
Title IX is the, is the big one.
It's the bear, yes. Okay.
We'll meet sooner than, I'll talk tomorrow, and we'll set something up.
Madam Chairman, could somebody just elaborate on what the...
Yeah, I was going to have...
There were drastic changes made to the Title IX law by the feds.
And that deals with sexual harassment.
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay.
The, the work that we have to do now is, could be defined as a labyrinth.
Okay, no, no.
And this isn't?
No.
And this is simple?
No, they just, they decided now would be a good time.
Yeah.
You're not doing anything else, so what will this add you to?
Thank you, Dr. Wells, sorry for staying on top of that, and Mr. Kessel. I think we're ready to move on to the superintendent's presentation. Because of all the changes and the resulting confusion that's going on in the community with regards to our public school system in the fall, the school committee asked Dr. Crowley to sort of amass the frequently asked questions, along with his leadership team, so we can try to get the, out the most information possible about our hybrid program, starting on September 21st, 2020. So...
Yeah, it should put the ones, Andrew, the ones back there should be on.
So we will now hear from the superintendent?
That's good.
That's good, too.
That's good, that's good, because that, yeah, because that's...
I'll, I'll, I'll take this opportunity to also inform the school committee that there's a Zoom call tomorrow, which will act as a town hall. I will moderate the questions for the superintendent to answer, sort of in a live session. We won't go all day. We will try to have a limit, and obviously, the school committee is invited. It's not a public meeting, so you will be observers. I'm just going to be the moderator. And that Zoom information went out in a letter, and we have a thousand-person limit. So just be aware of that in the public. We're not extending the amount of people, but we've never had more than 500, so I don't consider that to be a problem. Is there any questions on that while we're waiting? Yes, this moment.
Madam Chair, while the superintendent's keeping up his presentation tonight, I know you didn't usually mention it, but tonight's meeting is being covered tonight, if you want to mention how we're getting, going it out and legality of all that.
Thank you. We are still under the executive order by the governor to not conduct public, full public meetings with, with the spectators present in the building. So our meeting is being livestreamed and recorded by the Woburn Public Media, and I believe livestreamed on YouTube. I didn't check it, but I assume that that's happening. Thank you, Ms. Philip Sitt and Ms. Cormier. So, and that is because we are still under the executive order not having more than 25 people. But I did want to mention that Eric Shucan was here on behalf of the Woburn Teachers Association. And, okay, so, Dr. Crowley.
Okay, here's a quick presentation.
Sorry, I'm getting there.
Thank you very much.
Oh, shoot. Sorry, lost it. I don't know where it went.
Got a live mic there.
Yep, I'm not sure where it went. It's all right, take your time. Go ahead. Come on, here we go.
There we go. So, obviously, there's been a lot going on, a lot of questions from a lot of people. And I want to take the opportunity to speak to as many questions as possible, and have Assistant Superintendent Zalcanada Sprague and Dr. Baldassari speak to some of the more specific questions. And so, next slide, please. The, the first thing I want to say to everybody is that I recognize that there's anxiety and stress as it relates to the return to school from everywhere, from, from parents, from families, from teachers. You know, I speak as a parent, as a, as a dad, as a husband, and as your superintendent, as an educator. And so, none of this is easy, and I keep saying, and I mean, that there's no bad questions, and there's no great answers. And so, a lot of what you'll hear are answers to questions that are the answers today that may shift tomorrow. And so, you know, for that, I do apologize, but we're doing our best to answer the questions that we, with the information that we have now. So, that being said, the Woburn Public Schools' intent right now is to open in a hybrid model on September 21st. And that hybrid model is two cohorts, Cohort A coming in on Monday and Tuesday, everyone fully remote on Wednesday, and Cohort B coming in on Thursday and Friday. We also have Cohort C, who would be our high-needs cohort, which we'll speak to, which will be coming in for four days during the school week. The cohorts were assigned over the past couple of weeks to all students in the Woburn Public Schools. And if people are listening and wondering, well, I'm going to opt into the Virtual Academy, I don't need a cohort. The idea is that optimistically, we need to phase back in, so everyone would need a place to land if we were to go from a remote model to a phased-in hybrid, or if we were to go back into in-person. So that was the intent there, and we've had multiple requests, hundreds of requests, that were honored about changing cohorts, and we've tried to be flexible with our families to the extent that we possibly can. Any further request for cohort change should be directed to building principals, because they are the people that know the numbers at their schools. This morning, an updated plan, the Woburn Public Schools' Return to School Plan, was emailed again to families. And in the plan, it did include building-specific plans. So each building should, does have a building-specific Return to School Plan, and also updated schedules as it relates to the middle and high school and elementary schools. That's a link to it, to a doc that references the high school. Just, it's, the high school, if you, yeah, if you want to click it, and if you click Maps...
I got to see it first, sorry.
And then click the top one. And so, each school has done an excellent job of designing and planning for what school will look like, as it relates to morning drop-off, morning pickup, what the classrooms will look like, what the hallways will look like. And so, this is what we ask people to do at each school, so that families would be able to gather the information and make the best decision for them as it relates to their return to school. And so, that is now both at the district and school level, and I appreciate the work of the principals to get this together, so that families can make a decision. I, I think, I hope the Woburn community has known this, but principals are available to support families throughout this process. And I say that, I guess my email is a popular email, because I get a lot of requests wondering, you know, people asking what I think should, their family should do as it relates to certain scenarios. And while I would like to respond to the many emails, I possibly, I cannot possibly do that. So my request to anyone listening is to touch base with principals as it relates to questions at their school. Dr. Baldassari will speak momentarily to family support and communication, but we've tried to communicate to families as frequently as possible, but not to overwhelm with the abundance of information. We get probably anywhere from 50 to 100 pages of documents a week from the state, and we try to weed through those and send what we believe are the most relevant pieces of information to families, and synthesize it in a way that will make sense. That being said, as we head towards the beginning of school, the question was asked about the mask policy, those types of policies, COVID protocols will be sent, nursing policies will be sent. So families are going, should expect an increase in communication from both the district and the school as it relates to the return to school. We have extended to August 31st. We need to know from families, as of this, as of just prior to the meeting, we had approximately 2,700 responses from families as it relates to Virtual Academy or Hybrid. And so, we need, we're, we're asking families to please make a choice by Monday, because we need to begin planning both the Virtual Academy and the Hybrid Model. Right now, it, it was at 80% for the Hybrid Model and about 20% for the Virtual Academy. That statistic has held true throughout our survey, and now that we're asking parents to make a firm commitment, that seems to be holding true. Our website, thewoburnpublicschools.com website, does have all the links that, to everything that has been sent out. And I know that it's not a common place to look necessarily all the time, but I would please ask people if they have questions, to consult our website with any questions that they may have on current or previous correspondence as it relates to our return to school. And I'm glad that it was brought up earlier. This was, I dropped it in. So since our closure on March 12th, we had a meeting this afternoon with our Food Service Department. We've served over 114,000 meals to our students since March. And so, it's a, it's a really tribute to our Food Service Department and to the, the community of Woburn, and we're grateful for, for their hard work to support our families during this most difficult time. And so, you know, these are things that people, you know, we're here to, about, to talk about the academic and the educational, but as you, as we all know, one of the first things we did when we closed was to figure out how do we feed our kids. And so, that's sort of where we are as, as a community, and I just wanted to share that with everybody. And so, the next slides are going to be, I'm just going to break the ice, so to speak. It's, we're going, there's going to be a question on the screen. I'm happy to read the question, and then they're broken into subcommittees. So, for example, I believe Mr. Alcanada will address the finance and operations questions. All of these will be transcribed into an FAQ and placed into a, a document that people can read. So, with further ado...
Well, if you have to read the questions for us.
So, okay, I won't read the question.
Because you're going to do it tomorrow.
All right, so.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Crowley. So the, our procedure and protocol for students or staff that present with COVID symptoms, first of all, is completely aligned with the, with DESI, the Department of Public Health, and of course, the Woburn Board of Health. If a staff member, and it goes without saying, but I'll say it anyway, that if anybody in the Woburn Public School community, staff member, student doesn't feel well, they should stay home. If a staff member presents with COVID, they would be sent home immediately. If a student presented with symptoms of COVID, they would be immediately moved to what we are calling the medical waiting room. You've probably heard that term before. They would be isolated from the, the population. We will have two nurses in every building, so there will be a nurse that will staff that medical waiting room, and another nurse will attend to other emergencies or regular treatments. Karen Agadian will be called and asked to pick that student up. Karen Agadian will not come into the school. The procedure is for a, a member of the school staff to bring that child outside. So whether it's staff or student, doesn't matter, if they test positive, the protocol will be that they will be out of school at least 10 days, if not more. They'll be out 10 days, their symptoms have to improve, they have to be without fever for 24 hours, and, and without fever, without taking fever-reduct, reducing medications, and they need to be authorized by their respective Board of Health to come back to school. If that person is not tested, it would essentially be the same protocol. They would need to be out the 10 days, no fever, no medication, unless they have a differential diagnosis from a physician. Then they could be allowed back in. And the close-contact individuals, which is defined by someone within six feet for 15 minutes or longer while that person is infectious, they would be, they would, regardless of the test, they, if they were to test, and even if they came back negative, so regardless of the test, they must self-quarantine for 14 days, because on the day that you find out that you're close contact, and you could test negative, but four days later, you could have symptoms of COVID or have COVID. So they would have to self-quarantine for 14, at least 14 days. So that is, that is our protocol, completely aligned with state agencies, public health agencies, and the local Board of Health.
So, the question.
Yes.
So that sounds like if a student in a classroom, that could shut the whole classroom down.
Well...
Because all the students presumably are, you know, how are you going to judge whether it's six feet, and they're 15 minutes, obviously, and you're just saying that the whole classroom...
So the, the way that the classrooms, particularly at the elementary level, are spaced out, so students are not, they're six feet apart. And so, not every student is within, within six feet of each other. Like, so for example, I'm not six feet from Bob right now. So if I tested positive, you're a close contact, but he isn't.
I wouldn't be.
But is it, yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, abstractly, you know, students move, I don't know, if there's going to be less movements and...
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, pedagogically, things are going to be, you know, different.
And I think we'll have to, because I think parents are going to be concerned then if, say, three students in the classroom say you should stay home, but everybody else, you know, people... three students in the classroom say you should stay home, but everybody else, you know, people, you know, so, okay. You know, it's, it sounds good, but I think.
On a practical matter, I think I agree with Dr. Wald, that they'll likely just.
Okay, let's hope it doesn't happen.
But, okay. Yes, this is for me.
Will, if there is a student that tests positive, although they're not close contact with the rest of the students in the classroom, will the parents in that classroom be notified?
Yes.
Like DP, multiple ways.
So we have, so I, I don't know how to say this nicely.
We have a lot of questions.
I think we have about 35 slides. And if we do, like, we could be here till tomorrow morning.
Okay, we don't have to do the rest of it. I just had a question, you mentioned about two nurses, did we hire additional nurses?
We have, we, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Did you know that we are in the process of voting?
There's, they're contracted. They're not employees.
Okay, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
And when you do personnel, I, I think that it would be important to update the school committee on the emergency hiring, because we've hired some contracted people, not our employees, to support the COVID-related issues. So if.
I think Dr. Crowley and I are gonna try to sort of update.
Yeah, okay. Because you're right, Dr. Wald. Yeah, and I pinned that with the superintendent, so, okay.
Thank you.
All right, so we have 35 questions, so maybe the school committee could just.
I mean, I think what, what will happen potentially is that the next slide might answer the question that you have. So.
Okay, you got it.
Do our best.
I understand.
This is like at home.
There's been a lot of questions on personal protective equipment. As you've heard me say before, we currently have stockpiled a 12-week supply, as is the, the DESI requirement. And that, that PPE will be moved around to all of the buildings. We will continuously repurchase or acquire as, as we burn through it. Just to give you an idea, we have 117,000 disposable masks of various sizes, 9,700 K995 masks, masks, 20,000 disposable nitrile gloves, 10,000 disposable gowns, 240 goggles, 20 safety glasses, 650 face shields. In terms of hand sanitizer, we have 1,500 milliliter bottles. And we have 1,700 one-gallon bottles of hand sanitizer. So I, we are well-stocked, thanks to our Director of Facilities, Dave Dunkley. He has done a tremendous job preparing us. Yes, the, the answer to that question is it is quite possible that a class or a school may close due to various reasons. So buildings will be cleaned every day, Monday through Friday, and throughout the day. Major touchpoints and bathrooms will be cleaned three to four times a day. And on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, we'll be deep sanitizing and disinfecting. School buildings will close at 4:00 PM, unless the principal deems that needs to close earlier. Custodial staff will go through that building and do that, do that, that cleaning. On Wednesdays, there will be a deep cleaning and custodians will be able to do other custodial tasks. So as you've heard tonight, lunch will be a grab-and-go. There will be no lunch served in, in cafeterias or classrooms. Students will get their lunches as they leave. Students who are, who are on remote days will have the option to pick up their lunch at school and/or there will be deliveries on our bus routes. So we'll continue to do that. We'll essentially have deliveries every, every single day of the week. Students who take their lunch, get on the bus, should not be eating that lunch on the bus because they cannot take their mask off on the bus. They should be going home and eating their, their lunch. Yes, there will be, there will be nurses in, in every, two nurses in every building. And as you've heard tonight, we will be contracting with a nurse agency for those additional nurses.
And on the substitute question, I think it's more about substitute teachers. And so just if I could speak to that, we're, we're planning on hiring building-based subs rather than substitutes that are itinerant, so that, to reduce the exposure, the number of people that are coming in and out of buildings.
We have taken a comprehensive effort to upgrade, to, I should say, move our HVA systems to maximum optimization. Preventive maintenance have done, have been done on all of the systems. When we found any type of deficiency, if something wasn't working properly, it was corrected and/or will be corrected in the next week. We have contracted with Train, who is the primary manufacturer of our rooftop units. They will be coming out to do an assessment of all of our rooftop units. Any type of deficiency that they find, we will immediately correct. And our intent will be to correct those before, as soon as possible, and certainly before school, school begins. In addition to that, the preventive maintenance, I had indicated, will continue to be done on a quarterly basis. Our Director of Facilities has spoke, has spoken to various stakeholders, the UPS stakeholders, to address their concerns and will continue to be available to them throughout if they have any other questions that will arise. In terms of transportation, our vendor, North Suburban Transportation, is well-aware of the DESI guidelines that have been put out. All students who enter the bus will have a mask. If for some reason they forget, forget their mask, a mask will be provided to them upon boarding the bus. They will sit every other row on an altern, alternating format. Windows on that bus will be open whenever feasible. Obviously, if in climate weather, they, they will not be able to be open. We intend to have, and every student will have an assigned seat. And we fully intend to have lineups for the students that will identify their bus route and their seat assignment. The buses will be cleaned between runs and certainly between the afternoon and morning runs. Unfortunately, there will be no before or after-school programs that we have traditionally run because the buildings need to be closed by 4:00 PM so that they can be cleaned properly. And of course, we want to keep the cohorts as separate as possible. I think my colleague, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Baldassari, may have more information in the near future about supervised learning centers that he's working diligently with various stakeholders in the community. So hopefully, something will be available. You've heard tonight that the guidelines are three feet apart. But of course, in our hybrid model, where we'll have roughly half the students, they will be, most classrooms, many classrooms, a significant number of them, will be more than three feet. Most will be more like five or six feet apart. So, and as you saw, some hitches tonight, prior to that, they're certainly more than three feet between those desks. In terms of the athletics, Mr. Duran gave a detailed explanation of what's going on, so I'm not, won't repeat that. And in terms of clubs and extracurricular activities, we, we will strongly encourage and support in any way that those clubs can continue online remotely as they have since March. Obviously, it is very difficult to have these clubs meet when buildings will be closed earlier than expected. But if there's any way that we can support them in any other manner, we certainly will.
Yep, so the next question's mine, and what does hybrid looking, learning look like in the Woburn Public Schools? It'll follow, as you know, the two-day in-person, three-day remote model. During the two days in school, instruction will look like it has in the past, except people will be wearing masks and distancing, all that, that we've already discussed. On Wednesdays, students from both cohorts, cohorts, will come together virtually with their classroom teacher to have instruction during the day and follow the schedule that's set forth within the, the model schedules that were, are in our plan. At the middle school and high school level, on the two remote days, students will be learning asynchronously, self-paced, with materials that are provided by their classroom teachers. And they will have the opportunity to meet with those teachers at, at a point during the day, most often in the afternoon, where students are released a little bit earlier than typically, but longer than a half day. At the elementary level, the, the same is true for the two days in person. And the Wednesday, the cohorts will come together. What will be different is that the remote portion of that, teachers that will be teaching the remote portion of elementary will be our content specialists, our Title I teachers, and our STEM coaches. They will collaborate together with grade-level team teachers to plan instructions so that instruction will move forward and curriculum will be covered throughout the year. These, these folks, the content specialists and Title I teachers and STEM coaches have been general education teachers and sped teachers, some both, in our district already. They've had many years of experience and they understand exactly what our curriculum is. So they're able to effectively collaborate and move our instruction forward. During the first two weeks of school, we will be allowing the, especially at the younger grade levels, allowing students and teachers to sort of get to know each other and not jump right into academics, although that'll be part of the day. And during that time, these folks, the content specialists, Title I teachers, and STEM coaches will be virtually joining every classroom to sort of introduce themselves. So if I were a content specialist and assigned to grade one, I would go to all the classrooms over the course of the two weeks, introduce myself. I might read a story in a morning meeting, something along those lines, so people get to know who I am. I think that covers that. Sorry, I forgot I had to push the button. How is Edgenuity selected for our virtual school? That's a question that's been asked by many people. Following the DESI guidance that came out on July 24th, DESI also provided additional information about specific partners that districts and school systems could utilize to have virtual courses or learning management platform. And they described two options, an option four and an option five. Option four was Virtual Commonwealth of Massachusetts Virtual Schools, such as Greenfield or TECA. And option five was to purchase student licenses or site licenses in the learning management platform for any, any level that we wanted to. The Woburn Public Schools selected to go with option five and chose Edgenuity because we felt that it allowed us to have our Woburn teachers still be the teacher record for students in our school system that selected the virtual academy. Additionally, it is a program that's been around and well-known for many years. They've done a lot of homebound students, and they have other programs as well that support learning at all grade levels, as well as their, their courses are recognized by many colleges. So we felt that that was the best option for us to go with. Who's gonna be teaching our virtual academy? That, at this point, that's something that we are still trying to work on as we gather data for teachers who will not be able to return. The expectation, however, is that teachers who are determined to need an accommodation will become our teachers, the accommodation would be teaching virtually or remotely, that they would become our teachers for students there. We are working very hard to gather that data and look at student license, teacher licensure, grade levels that they have taught, and, and try and assign students who select the virtual academy so that we compare them up. That may mean that if I'm a student that goes to the Goodyear and I'm in first grade, I may be paired with other students from other schools in the first grade, and I may have a teacher who's not a Goodyear teacher within the virtual academy. Sorry, I didn't miss anything on there. So, yeah, again, you know, it, it's not unusual, especially at the elementary level, for us to have teachers that change grade levels. We will do the best we can with the, the staff, to meet staff needs and also assigned students. But bear in mind, at elementary level, our licensures are generalist licensures, and they cover grade spans, not specific grades or specific content. So it is possible that we may have a second-grade teacher who becomes a first-grade virtual teacher, for example. And, and that, that happens, again, typically in non-pandemic times. We have had teachers change grade levels, even change schools. So that, that answers that question, I believe. If you choose hybrid, can I change my mind? And the answer to that is yes, you can choose to, to move your child to the virtual academy. Should you cha, cha, should you choose to start in the virtual academy and decide to move to the hybrid model? This change will not occur until the end of a marking period. At the elementary level, that would mean trimester, and at the high school, it would mean semester. So that, that teachers, parents would need to make a request to the building to move back into the hybrid model so that we can ensure that they understand their cohorts, that people are prepared for them to return. It's something that the Department of Education has afforded us the opportunity to spend probably a little bit more time planning for that than a typical child who might come in and register new and then has to start immediately. So if the district should have to move completely remote, to a full-remote model for situations, obviously, that might be designated by the governor or by situations specific to our community, the idea is that children who have selected the virtual academy will stay in the virtual academy. And they, the teacher, the students who are in hybrid would go full-remote with their assigned classroom teacher. So if I'm in Cohort A and Bob's in Cohort B, we would only have seen each other on Wednesdays. But moving to full-remote, we would then see each other every day remotely. How will learning look different than it did last spring? Last spring, the requirement from the department was for students to be engaged in learning for half of a typical school day. For the return to school this fall, the Woburn Public Schools expects students to be engaged in full day of learning. This will be a combination of in-person and asynchronous or self, self-paced virtual learning. How will attendance, how is attendance going to be taken and grading? So attendance, to start off with, is typically taken at the beginning of the school day. In talking with principals, Principal Kalanin at the high school, she is looking to take it either at the end of first period or the beginning of second period. And the middle schools typically take it first thing in the morning, so during their first-period class. And the same with elementary, it would be at the beginning of the day. For the virtual online academy, the, the actual program takes attendance. So it monitors, there's a huge monitor piece to Edgenuity, that there's a dashboard for each student. And the students, the time that they're engaged in their courses is, is documented. So you can see, it also says for an assigned course, where you stand in that. You're just beginning it, you're in the middle of it, you're in the end of it. It's assigned for a time period. It also shows that in red, you, you need to step up the pace, you're not going quite as far as you should be. In green, that you're, you know, you're right on pace. And then there's another color, which I forget what it is, I apologize. But it shows that you're like ahead of the game. So if you needed to slow down and focus on another area, you could do that. But it does take attendance. It talks about how long you spend on certain coursework that is assigned. So that is something that we can monitor both for our in-person, hybrid, remote students and our virtual academy students. Grading, as I mentioned briefly earlier, is going to happen in a very similar fashion as it had in the past. Middle school and high school and elementary will all maintain their report cards. Teachers will grade based on in-person and assign asynchronous work that students will need to turn in. At the elementary level, with the, the two different groups of teachers, there's collaboration time, plan, planning time built in for teachers to coordinate about instruction and assessment. They'll use assessment data and discuss those grades. Not unlike what happens, and Dr. Baldassari, I don't know if you'll get to this piece, but with students who are in special education and are integrated into classrooms for some courses, the teachers collaborate when they grade those students on their report cards. How will teachers and students accountability, accountability be different than in the past in, in the spring? So in the spring, the teacher evaluation system was suspended. So part of our return to school in, in the fall is that teacher evaluation systems will be back in place. There also will be specific schedules that teachers need to follow and ensure that they are engaging with students. are engaging with students regularly and providing direct instruction to students. For students, attendance will be mandatory in all the models that are selected. Additionally, work completion and participation in class is expected each day. The district has purchased something called EdPuzzle. This is a program that allows teachers to video themselves, so asynchronously push it out to students that they can watch on their remote days. And within EdPuzzle, you can embed questions that students would need to be watching the video and respond to them in order for the video to continue. And teachers, again, not unlike Edgenuity, can monitor the amount of time students are investing in this. So if they, like some of the testing that we've done in the past, if they zoom through it and don't do well, you can understand why, and you may go back and reassign that to a student. If my student is enrolled in the virtual academy, seven to 12, will they participate in any small group instructional virtually? In the virtual academy, the teachers that are assigned to that will be setting up courses for students, monitoring progress, providing feedback, grading, and they will have daily check-ins with groups, and they'll also communicate with families. Within those check-ins, it is, is expected that there will be some instruction and support provided. We also see our coordinators and department heads as a level that might be able to provide more specific instruction as we move higher up and the coursework becomes more difficult.
I heard that high-needs special education students can attend school on all four days each week. How do I know if my child is high-needs, is a high-need student? The high-need students are those who are in our specialized program, starting with the early childhood program, children who are in special education, the PALS program at the Reeves, the RISE program at the Shamrock, the GAIN program at the Goodyear, the LEAP program at the AltaVesta, the Transitional Education Program at Woburn Memorial High School, the Launch Program at Woburn Memorial High School, and the PEAK program at Woburn Memorial High School. My child is not in the high-needs category, how will special education services be provided? If your child is on an IEP, the services will be provided either in-person or remotely. There will be no reduction in the special education services for our students. My son receives services when I bring him to school because he does not attend public school. How will he receive his services in the hybrid or remote learning model? These students will, the preference will be to provide those services remotely. There are certain services, like physical therapy or occupational therapy, that can only be delivered in-person. But if the service can be delivered remotely, that is, maybe intention is to deliver it that way. My child is in special education and does not like to wear a mask. Will he or she be required to wear one all day? Obviously, we have this discussion. There is an educational component to wearing a mask. However, some accommodations that may be made for students with special needs, the student may alternately wear a face mask in some situations, and there may be other, you know, more severe situations in which students are provided with actual
shields?
The shield barriers in their learning, in their learning areas as we teach them to, to wear their masks for safety. Thank you. My son has almost daily social emotional learning needs, and he receives counseling. How is this going to take place? We are going to be able to provide counseling remotely through our telehealth model. We were very successful with this starting back in March, and a lot of, a lot of development to how we were delivering those services remotely. Additionally, while students are in school, we are still going to have our counselors, our adjustment counselors in the building to deal with the triage support that students My child is on a 504 accommodation plan, is he going to get his accommodations? Also, how do I change his plan to help him during remote learning? All accommodations on a 504 plan will be administered, and the 504 coordinator from each school will be reaching out to families to collaborate to see if any changes to the 504 accommodation plans need to be made for when the students are in remote learning. My child receives specialized transportation services, is this going to be handled any differently? Any child who has specialized transportation on their IEP will receive it. The regulations for how many students would be on a van or how many students could be on a bus have changed. That means that the students that our children previously went to school with may no longer be on those transports. Additionally, some parents might not be comfortable with their students being on a transport with other students because they're in an enclosed environment. We will address each of those unique needs of these parents and students individually, and we ask that parents that would prefer to transport their own students to school contact our special education office as we will be making some significant accommodations in those situations. Our family had a very difficult summer, and things have been very hard since the pandemic began. Are you doing anything to help kids who are struggling as a result of the pandemic? Please help. We will be doing assessments of our students. Surveys will be going to parents, directly to older students, and when the survey results come back, we'll be using the results of those surveys to see if, if or who, which students need our immediate support when school returns. So be on the lookout for those surveys. And as I said in the previous slide, counseling services will remain, be available. High-quality counseling services that we have will be available for our students when they return to school. What are working parents supposed to do if we cannot be home with our children? This is obviously has been a big, a big issue in the community. I think it was on Nessen the other night. We are working with the Boys and Girls Club and with the YMCA to, in an attempt to develop what we're calling supervised learning centers in the city. We also have the support of Mayor Galvin, who is working with us to potentially open up the line in school for this service. Obviously, we can't staff it because our personnel are working with our students either remotely or in-person every day. Obviously, we don't have vacations because we're using our buildings each day. As of this moment, the YMCA is able to handle 60 students. The Boys and Girls Club is able to handle 120 students, and the library can handle 10 students. If we are able to use the line in school, we will be able to service at minimum an additional 100 students or obviously maybe more. The staff that will work in these centers will be from the YMCA or the Boys and Girls Club. They have staff available, some people who have been laid off that may return to work, and because of the way that they're set up, they have the ability to staff up and hire new people, college students maybe, if needed. The, the cost of personnel, obviously, would be a huge concern. The state's voucher system is being explored so that families who have unique needs, particularly around socioeconomics, would be able to receive these services from the Boys Club and Girls, the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA for free. Because the supply that we would have with regard to seats in such a program will, could never reach the demand, we have to have an application process. That process is being developed now by the YMCA, the Boys and Girls Club, and from the district, we have Rosemary Donovan and Adrian Amanda Sheldon working on this, on this protocol. Obviously, those with the greatest need will be able to access the service. Homeless students, students who are in foster care, any children of military who are, you know, maybe new to the community and don't have connections that can assist them. Socioeconomic factors, single-parent households, those things will all come into play. And we have a lot of work to do, but we have incredible strength in our partnership and the support of Mayor Galvin. So I'm really optimistic about this possibility for, again, our neediest families. It's, we, you know, I can't express that enough, that it's not a, we have to look at every case individually. And I think that was it.
And then just the concluding slide, I'm sure there's probably follow-up questions. But, you know, as we continue to move forward, I started off by saying this may change by tomorrow, and so the metrics change. We'll continue to work with the Board of Health here in Woburn and the Mass Department of Public Health to monitor data as it relates to the virus and the spread in the community. And one of the things that we're trying to do at this point is to align staff and student requests as it relates to accommodations, staff requests for accommodations and the virtual academy requests. This has never been done in public education, and so we're trying to ensure that we're able to meet the needs of our staff and to be able to make sure that they're safe to the extent that we can, as well as meet the needs of our kids and maintain safety for them as well. And just the concluding thinking, and I'm sure we'll talk more, but, you know, we have to, what we say today, again, may change, and I think we have to be flexible in our thinking. And I'm a little, you know, fatigued by the word pivot, but that seems to be the word of, the word of the month. But, you know, should things change, we need to pivot, we will. And so I just want, you know, the school committee and the community to know that we're trying to plan for all different scenarios to make, make sure that everyone is, is safe. And so the hybrid model is, as we, as we think about it and describe it, I believe, allows us to get students back with their peers and with their teachers to develop some type of relationship should we need to pivot to another model. One of the ways that I, that I do believe we were successful in the spring, and I've seen it because I've been in classrooms throughout the district for many years, the relationships that occur between the teacher and student matter so much, and having a relationship developed via, via computer, it can happen, it's just not ideal. And I think, given the mitigation factors that we've talked about, including the mask policy the school committee adopted tonight, will allow us to, to the, to the best that I can predict, to open in a way that will allow for families to make a choice, but also for schools to open as safely as, as we can possibly. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure, is that it? No. Before we start, Dr. Baldassari, there was a slide there that a child was struggling. If someone contacts the district in the summer and says, please help, I assume that we, that there are people that would be able to respond to that?
Well, yeah, Rosemary, we have actually had interactions over the summer. And we've had to spring into some pretty significant action.
Okay, I just, I was very moved by that, and I, and I wouldn't be able to concentrate unless I closed that loop, so, thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, Ms. Cormier.
For Ms. Alcanada, so cleaning throughout the day? You mentioned deep cleaning on the, on the hybrid days. How is that different from the Wednesday deep cleaning?
So the, the difference will be that on the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, we'll have the ability to have the deep sanitizing and cleaning. Wednesday, we'll be able to do the other custodial task that we may not be able to get to in terms of vacuuming, sweeping, wiping down areas that are not major touchpoints, but we can get to those that we would, that the afternoon crew would be able to get to, you know, people in the building.
So we're focusing on the deep cleaning while they're in the building, but?
Yes.
Worrying about other stuff later.
Yes, absolutely.
Perfect. And as far as the HVAC, so, so far, you mentioned that, you know, it's, it's an ongoing process, train is coming. Are we using, I know there are some classrooms that don't have windows, they're more internal. Are we using those classrooms?
As least as possible, we'll do, we'll use those. And Mr. Dunkley, a couple of days ago, gave us all a tutorial in terms of how will the air in those inside classrooms are not recirculated to other interior classrooms. So as least as possible, as I, as far as I know. In fact, I know, for instance, here in the Joyce in the library, that's going to be divided and made into two classrooms so that there'll be some classrooms interior that will be moved there.
Thank you. And just for Dr. Baldassari, as far as, I know I mentioned in my minutes, the testing that is sort of backed up from March for sped, where are we with that, as far as when we can start that, scheduling?
So we have, we have contracts with some, some providers to, you know, to, you know, move this as quickly as possible. And the work will begin, you know, immediately upon return. We were reaching out to families to get their consent to extend the testing timelines, which was the way, you know, the way to resolve having to spend hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars in September and October, is some people agreed to extend their evaluations to January or to March. So we, we, you know, we, we are working diligently to, to get through all that.
Are we potentially prioritizing, say, kids that do not yet have an IEP?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, some students are already in the process, like right in March, and it's imperative that we, you know, we finish up that testing as soon as they get back.
Great.
A little different for, you know, a student who's had three annual reviews and a psychological assessment has pretty much been the same over a nine-year period than somebody who has not been in special education before.
Very good. Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
So a few questions. Mr. Alcanada, first, are you guys anticipating any potential changes to bus routes, bus stops if the cohort numbers don't quite match what they normally would have?
Yes, we'll, we'll look at that. Obviously, we are looking at that now. We're basing our bus routes this year on, of course, last year. If for some reason, a bus, a bus route is, is not populated, we will work with Mostverden to, to modify that. But we'll do that before school. We would only do it once school starts it, for some reason there was a significant change.
Absolutely. And are we confident in our current custodial staffing levels given the additional work that's going to be needed to be done? It sounds like a lot of cleaning was happening.
Yes. Mr. Dunkley and his custodial and facilities have done a tremendous job in keeping up. They are, they are prepared to go. We had a vacancy custodial position at Woburn High School, which we are in the process of filling now. So at this point, Ms. Phillips, yes, I do feel confident that we are, we are properly staffed.
Because custodians have had to do a tremendous amount of, they've carried every little bit of it up, so I want to make sure we're not overloading people.
We really, we are, we owe a lot of thanks to them. Since March, they have worked, they have been essential, they have kept these buildings up and running and all of the plumbing, electrical, mechanical systems. And I tip my hat to them because they've done a tremendous job, and as a group, they are ready to go and ready to prove that they can, they can make this, whatever model we choose, they'll, they'll make work.
No, no. Thank you. Sorry. So Ms. Sprague, we talked a little bit about Edgenuity, so are there, I was a little unclear in terms of, especially at the, sort of the higher levels. Are there, are there going to be opportunities for students to work with one another in some kind of asynchronous learning activity, or is it all going to be asynchronous? You mentioned teachers holding potential classes, how, like, how might that look? And I know we're not 100% ready.
Yeah, we're not 100% ready to say exactly how that will look. It's going to depend on staffing that we have available.
It's going to depend on staffing that we have available. If we need to rely more on, say, our science coordinator to help look at coursework and things like that, because we may not have a chemistry teacher that works, that's able to work virtually, then we need to, we're going to have to make certain moves to allow for some type of group and instruction to take place. My hope is that we will be able to have some small periods of time for instruction for those students.
Could you clarify a little bit? You said that virtual academy students will not be moving back into classes if we were to go remote sometime during the school year. Could you clarify a little bit about why that might be? I know that's something that I've got a lot of questions about.
Sure.
Is that a staffing issue, is that a resources issue, is that a pedagogical issue?
Potentially a little bit of both.
Okay.
All three, rather. I think that, especially at the younger grades, to have a young student assigned to a teacher virtually from the get-go and maybe two months in, switch, and then if we need to go back, they would go back to virtual, that constant switching, even at the upper grades, is just for consistency of instruction, it could be challenging. And we will do the best we can. Edgenuity allows us the opportunity to add lessons, realign the scope and sequence so that we'll be able to work to sort of match it with ours. I'm not certain it'll be a perfect match, we'll get it as close as we can, but we want to make sure that students continue to progress through the curriculum and that bouncing back and forth could potentially disrupt that.
And so Woburn teachers will be facilitating edgenuity lessons, will they be involved in any of the, I mean, it's not, they can't necessarily be involved in the curriculum building within edgenuity, but will they have some level of flexibility, assuming that they're teaching something that's within their own expertise or experience, to guide that?
Absolutely, as I mentioned, they're able to add lessons, they can take lessons away from it, they, you know, the assignments would be put in place by them, so that it definitely would, they would have flexibility to be able to do that.
Thank you. I think that's all, that's all I have, yes, I'm good.
Okay. Dr. Wells.
I'll take this opportunity to ask some big picture questions. So my understanding with DESI and so forth, they would say we are good to be in the classroom right now, all full-time. That's sort of the, what the state of Woburn is right now, that's what they're saying. But they have said, you know, you can do hybrid and so forth. And so my question is, and again, I don't see how we ever go from hybrid, I can see how we can go from hybrid to fully remote, you know, I could see things changing. But it's not clear to me how we ever go from hybrid, this year at least, to all in person. And I'm trying to understand, you know, are we committed to hybrid for the entire year? Or how would we determine that it would be okay to go to all-in? Because right now, DESI, the way they set up that code with the city, City isn't a green city, and they're saying that's, you could be all-in. But we've determined we're going hybrid. So I'm trying to understand, for a parent's perspective, what would I expect for the year? Or when, how would you make this, or how do we, what are we looking for criteria to go all-in, if we're ever going to go all-in this year, or are we just going to stay? And maybe it's.
It's hard to say what we're going to do for the full year.
Yeah.
Because the virus is going to dictate that.
Right, and that could go to the opposite extreme.
So that could go to the opposite, it could go both ways. Like our numbers could go to zero, a vaccine could be developed. So there's things, one of the things that DESI, that we, as a school district decided was that, you know, the CDC is recommending a six-foot distance. And DESI said three feet. Now, that didn't feel comfortable if, you know, as it related to kids being back in school. And we also have to factor in, of course, our staff and their comfort level in returning to these buildings. And so I think what, you know, ideally, we're building towards a full back in person. At what point that happens is very difficult to say, whether it's we're at a 0% for three weeks in a row, or there's a vaccine that's developed. That, believe me, there's nothing more that I would like than to be back in person.
I just don't know what kind of further guidance we're going to get from anybody.
I can candidly, neither do I. And I'm not.
That's my only dollar question.
I'm not.
Yeah, no, okay, it's fine, you know. I know it's a tough question, because I've, you know, thought about it a lot, and I don't see any, anything, like, there's not going to be a lightning bolt in the sky that's going to say, okay, Matt, you can bring everybody back.
I keep looking for it.
Yeah, I know, but, okay, all right. So one other thing, you know, we talked about the start date and, you know, originally it was the 16th, and now we've moved to the 24th. Could you, just to clarify for parents, what will teachers be doing in those eight, nine days for training? So that they understand why we had to push it back?
Yeah, so I, I'll speak in general terms and then I'll turn it over. But, you know, I think, I think a couple of different things. First of all, teachers need to understand what their classrooms are going to look like in a completely physical, you know, a different space. There's PPE training that has to happen as it relates to particularly our high-needs kids, but for all students, for all teachers. Where kids are entering in the build, teachers need to understand it's not business as it was back when we closed. So there's certain building-specific training. There's also some pedagogical training that, as it relates to technology especially, you know, whether the students are in front of you or remote, you know, we've invested time and resources into expanding platforms. For example, CSOW at the K-2 level will be new to our Woburn teachers, so they need to spend time, I envision an hour training and then spend an hour doing some lessons, and we'll circle back to it, so that it's sort of building in time for teachers to work collaboratively on lessons. And so, and then the last thing that I think of is the social and emotional health. How are we going to help students when they're struggling with masks? How are we going to help colleagues when they're struggling with issues? How do, you know, how are we responding to certain scenarios, health scenarios in the district? You know, we talk about the protocols and we say this, 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 but really, what's it look like in real time? So, you know, those types of things, I think we need to flesh out, because, you know, the volume of paper coming from the department has to become a reality in the schools, so I don't know if that is enough.
Well, no, I think, I was just trying to have you expound on, so that people don't think we just decided we're going to start a few days late, you know? And so I just want to emphasize that things are going to be.
Thank you.
I appreciate that, Dr. Wells, thank you.
And so maybe it would help the committee, you know, after you do this, the training thing, just give us a schedule of what kind of training activities took place and so forth.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I had a question, Ms. Sprague. So you talked about attendance. And so, clarify it a little bit, so I assume on the virtual days, it's not just once, because it sounded like attendance, you know, once and so, or is it going to be?
So in the virtual academy, it definitely will take attendance every time a child signs on to whatever topic there is. Within the remote part of hybrid, there, if there's Google Meets that are used, there's ways in talking with Gen Judkins that that meet can take attendance for us. So there are ways that that can be accomplished. Also, as work is assigned, as I explained with EdPuzzle, you can see when kids are on it, how much time they were on it, and also look at it from an assessment perspective, as far as were students able to successfully answer the questions that were embedded into that video.
So much to my son's chagrin, they figured out, like, you can't log in and then go play basketball. They're going to measure your progress. And so.
So these would be kind of the things that the teacher will be responsible for explaining to the students when the virtual part begins and things like that. And that'll be part of our policy that you're working on for attendance, et cetera, et cetera.
Another key piece to that, that we discussed within my subcommittee in the technology working group, is that students are going to have to log in, like, and be seen. Well, obviously, part of that, as you discussed, the background, teaching them how to put a background up if they don't want to show their home, but we need to be able to see the student engaging with us remotely.
And so the other thing it brings out, you know, and it's probably something to talk of, you know, is now parents are going to have more visualization of sort of the educational process. And I'm sure that, you know, it's good and bad. And so, you know, I think that's going to be something new, where you are going to have to deal with as administrators and we as school committee members, hearing feedback. So I think, you know, emphasize that it's a learning process, you know, and I assume as everybody's acting as professional as they can and doing the best they can, everything should be fine. So this is sort of like a talking to the community. You know, they bring their concerns to the administrators, the proper administrators, but they should understand that, you know, when people, you know, it's not like a scripted TV show where everybody has a quick line and quick response, and so, you know, people talk like normal. So I think, you know, when people are observing teachers, that they should understand that just like the rest of us, and, you know, they don't have that script in front of them. Sometimes maybe they're pausing a little long and so forth, so I think everybody should just chill a little bit and, you know, we're going to work for the best.
Dr. Wells, if I could have you address the community where I teach as well?
But no, and it's a natural, you know, you want your best for your kids and, you know, we think everybody, you know, smooth on their feet and so forth, and I know that's not the case, me especially. And then just finally about the specialists, like PhysEd, how, like, how's that going to fit into this? Because it's not going to happen when the kids are in school, but presumably it's going to be part of that virtual training, so maybe just expound on how the specialists are going to fit into it.
So we, actually, during our meeting today, we did have a conversation about that. At the elementary level, the specialists, it's been determined that they will be remote for several reasons, so that teachers, teaching from their classroom, we have all the materials, we don't have students transitioning in and out, and teachers with every student in the building every week. At the middle and high school, the way the schedules are set up, specialists are included in the schedule, and we haven't finalized those, so I am not going to say that this is exactly how it will go, but potentially, like, every day they'll have a special, it may be the same special, again, for safe and safety and health reasons, to make sure that the cohort stays the same with one person for like a five-week rotation, and then they change specials, but that's to be discussed. It's just one thought, that potentially could be a workable solution.
And how are we going to do the routine things we take for, you know, students meeting with guidance counselors, preparing for college applications and things like that? We're, you know, we're talking a lot about the educational process, but there are so many other things that happen in the school. When's that time going to be allotted?
So those would be scheduled times that students would set up with their prospective guidance counselor to do those things. It is something that Jessica Callenan's already been working on to put in place.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Chisholm.
Hand sanitizers, are those the touchless pumps, I'm assuming? Because I would think that the pumps weren't used when they're, now they're contaminated.
Yeah, we have pumps throughout the building. I don't know that there'll be a pump in every single classroom.
But they're not touchless, but they are actually pumps?
I'm sorry, we do have touchless in buildings. I'm not, I don't know that every classroom will have a touchless mechanism.
But just sanitizer?
Yeah, and when you touch it, it's kind of contaminated. So, and then for the teachers that are in school, are they going to be in the buildings for the entire day, even like at the elementary, once they leave? Do they stay there, so?
So do you mean with the shortened schedule, will teachers leave with the students?
Right.
No, the expectation is that teachers will stay within the school. It's going to be planning and collaboration time for them to work, or at different levels, it may be office hours for students to check in, that type of thing.
I didn't know what that was. And I'm just a little nervous with talking about the lineman, I mean, we left that building because it wasn't suitable for kids to be in, and then we were told, even to get it up to, even to be able to have it, it's going to cost millions of dollars.
Yeah, so we're going to go, I think, tomorrow to tour it, to see the feasibility of it, but it's.
The last time we were there was pre-ramp.
So I think we have to do a buildings and grounds meeting, unfortunately.
We're only talking about the use of the annex side.
Not the castle, not the castle side.
No, no, it's, the holes in the pool.
Old, but.
It's, I mean, there's a reason.
Yeah. It just makes me a little nervous to tell people that we can put them back in there after that. And I just, one of the things people talk about, like, the academy and remote, so that's the same thing.
The virtual academy is for someone who elects to not send their child to the hybrid model. Within hybrid, there's in-person and remote days. That's why we made the distinction to call it the virtual academy. Those students are fully remote.
Okay.
Yeah, we spent time trying to figure it out ourselves.
Yeah, because I was at all only academy, but I thought it was just remote, I'm like.
No, we stopped calling it fully remote because it got too confusing with the remote side of hybrid. That's why we switched the name of it to virtual academy.
So it's pretty much, it's either go in hybrid or it's kids in the academy.
Correct. You got it.
There's a third thing, I didn't know there was a third thing going on. And then I just, one of the things that parents have been talking about is fire drills. I know it's kind of something that.
Yeah, so we have a safety meeting coming up with both police and fire, because it's not just fires, Alice drills and so forth.
Right, right.
We'll develop a plan with the Woburn Public Safety.
Well, I did not address it. It was being addressed.
Yeah, no, it's, right.
Yeah, it's something that we are, and I just, and I just, with the change from the two full days to the, you know, two half-days for the parents, and I know that we're trying to take care of as many kids as we can, but I think when that question was for essential people, people that are actually working, that were planning on at least working two full days, and now are cut down. So I think that when we're going through the applications, if people are asking, I think people that are working need to be in the top spot, too, because they're the ones that, you know, are meeting day here, because they were assuming that we're going to go two full days minimum, so that, I know the parents have been concerned about that. Somebody, these are, Jessica Wells covered most of it, but in the buses, we don't know yet, because that's still a work in progress. Buses total for kids?
Right, so it's trending, you know, the ridership is significantly lower. As of 3:00 PM this afternoon, it appeared that the most on any bus was 13 or 14 kids.
So, but you're not making crazy at schools for traffic to go? It's becoming that we're going to.
Half of them.
Half of it.
That'll be the least of our problem.
Yeah.
It'll be a problem, all right.
If you think of something, Ms. Chisholm, just flag me.
Mr. Kessel.
All right, I think it was, the nurses, we're bringing in the, it sounds like a company or some type of service. What will they do, we hope there won't be a lot of COVID issues, what would they be doing in those off times?
They'll assist, they'll assist the school nurse if she has more than one patient or if there's an emergency, we'll have that medical professional to attend to it.
And will they be there a full school day?
I'm sorry?
Either the service or the extra nurse will be there the full school day?
They'll be there the entire time that students will be there.
Okay, so if, even though the teachers are staying for their prep time, I'm assuming the nurses are available for teachers as well, is that correct?
Yes, we haven't, yes.
During school day?
Absolutely, they'll be there a little bit after the students. We haven't exactly figured out what the end of their day will be, but absolutely there'll be two nurses there when students are there.
And on the grab-and-go lunch, I just know you get a lot of parents asking about that, the timeframe that the kids will be eating. I know it varies in each grade level. So what's, what will be the difference here, the grab-and-go will be at the end of that school day? Maybe just walk me through at least, because I'm not understanding, and I think there's a lot of parents that aren't getting that piece.
Sure, toward the, toward the end of the day, students will, when they leave, they'll get to a center, if you will, where their lunches will be. We had a meeting today with the Food Services Director where we might have them file through or near the cafeteria, which might be easier to keep the food, prepare the food, package the food, so that's a possibility. So, yes, if it gets to the end of the day, they'll get, they'll grab their lunch, and they'll either get in the car to go home or on the bus, some even walk.
So let's use elementary as an example, what time would they be leaving and grabbing a lunch?
So elementary.
Actually eating it when they get home, because they can't eat it on the bus.
Yep, elementary will be dismissed at noon time, so it'll be some.
No, one.
I'm sorry, one PM, elementary's dismissed at 1:00 PM. So it'll be sometime before that, probably around 12:40, 12:45.
They get their lunch at 12:40, 12:45, they get in the car, they get on the bus, they can't eat on the bus, they can eat in the car.
That's their.
Let's say it's a bus. They're not getting home for a 20-minute ride. I don't know, something like that. So they'd be eating at 1:30.
Yes. That's quite possible. Yes.
Potentially. And what would have normal time have been in elementary, let's say, last lunch?
Last lunch would typically end around 1:20.
Okay.
So kids would have just eaten within like 15 to 20 minutes before that, if they did recess first, and that happened frequently.
Okay. And speaking of recess, that was my other question. Is there recesses off the table? Is it part of the plan? I mean, is there any outdoor time at all, like on our.
During their break times and snack times, it's possible for them to go outside. Recess is going to be determined by individual buildings. As you know, the buildings are very different, and what they have available for space outside varies from building to building. So that that's left to those those buildings.
It's going to, I mean, the answer is there will be time to go outside.
Yeah.
But it's going to be managed, as Ms. Bragg suggested, a little differently because you you can't have four different age groups at the playground at the same time.
Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, just having said that, obviously, you guys have thought about all this. There won't be much activity for the kids. They're going to be in the classroom for that amount of time. They're going to go out for a break with more of a kind of a managed walking around, take care.
You know, I think one of the things you talked, the early question about the PD is, one of the things that I think about is, teachers have the flexibility to go outside and teach during the course of the day. So if there's a way to figure out how to go outside and count 10 leaves, you know, I think that would be a nice way for students to get some movement and some.
Mask break.
Some mask break and some some content. And so, you know, we we want people to think a little differently about.
That would be part of the training.
About the about the time that that students are with them. And, you know, again, this whole thing is different. So some teachers may be more comfortable doing it one way or the other. But as long as we're trying to maintain the protocols.
And will we allow as as a district, you know, not only to go out count leaves, but to actually just to have a classroom in the on the outside?
Yes.
Books and so on, doing homework.
Yeah. So we did, I mean, because that was one of the questions previously is tents. We did price out tents, and it would be about a quarter million dollars a month to rent tents to, and it wouldn't.
Denied.
I think what the private services, there would be an exception.
So so I I think the tent companies figured out something.
That's intense.
Sure is.
Speaking of the record.
You got that, Gene?
You mentioned snack times as well. Is there going to be snacks, 11 classes, masks off at that point, or just a scheduled snack time?
Yes, there will be there will be snacks at the elementary level. And obviously, mask will have to be off at that time, and students will have to stay the respect of six feet apart.
Okay. And then the other one I had was the buses. You you mentioned assigned seating.
Yes.
So you've got on a rainy day, 20 kids sitting at the bus stop, three.
13.
Whatever. No, that's my point. Yeah. 20 kids sitting at a bus stop, 13 are supposed to be on the bus. And what happens to the seven?
So what what we're going to be talking with North Suburban Transportation about that. We're not going to leave any kid at at the bus stop. But right now, based on the trends that we're seeing, there's going to be more than enough room on a bus so that if if somebody were to show up and they're not on that bus, obviously, they're not going to have a lanyard. So the bus driver is going to know that they're not on that on that bus. In that type of situation, hopefully, there's going to be more than enough room. They could they could sit in the the next row that's not that's not being taken.
Kind of, obviously, you don't want to leave at the stop.
We would we would never, we would never abandon children at the bus stop.
And then for testing of vision and hearing, which happens throughout the year, I know, you know, Lions Club, we get requests for eyeglass all the time. How is that going to be addressed? I mean, are they going to still do that and just any?
Can I take this?
Sure, absolutely.
I would assume it would happen in the same manner that it's happened in the past. And typically, it's one child that comes down at a time. So that that would maintain that social distancing. And with a second nurse, it might actually.
Yeah.
Help facilitate that as well.
Maybe think of that. Might actually work out better. Buses assigned, nurses. I think that's all I had.
Okay. I, oh, Ms. Marren.
Thank you. Some great questions for all the administrators tonight. Great questions. I know you had 35, 40 questions. But yesterday, I had the opportunity to both tour the Kennedy and the Joyce as incoming.
You've never been there before?
Yeah, with the students, the incoming students and some of their families. And I want to put a shout out to the administrators of those buildings. And I know how, Ms. Bragg, you clicked on a button showing the classrooms. And I kind of thought the same thing. What is what is half these kids going to look like in a classroom? So over the Kennedy, you already have one set up. And as the families were touring the building, they saw the classroom. And, you know, once you visually see it, you can kind of understand, I guess it's doable. And the same way we're talking now, half the kids. Talk to the custodians, we're only cleaning up after half the kids. Kids make a big mess. Well, now they're only going to make half a mess. The fact that the the parents were going through, and we've heard it a bunch of times, kids want to get back. And one of the parents at the Kennedy was like, yeah, he can't wait to get in the building. And he was getting an intake of what's available at the Kennedy. They were already doing some of the things that you showed, the arrows, the signage. And I I feel as though the kids will adapt just fine to, you know, the behavior that they're going to be giving in beginning of the school year. I think I said it when we introduced the hybrid way back when, that, you know, our staff are up for a challenge. And this is just going to be challenging, has just been challenging to all of us here tonight. I I think they're up for the challenge. I think the hybrid, because like Dr. Wells says, we can't just flip a switch and say, hybrid's off, we're going full, everybody on the bus, everybody go to school. For the time being, hybrid is starting to look better and better. And I know we had Mr. Shu Cam with us earlier, and there's been thoughts and comments regarding this teachers' union. I know the superintendent and Ms. Crowley are working diligently with them. But I think we're in a better place here in Woburn. At least we're talking. Each and every night in the noon, you'll see towns that teachers are refusing to even show up. And I hope we're not going to be at that point. It looks as though things are working out mask-wise, air quality-wise, hygiene-wise. So I think, again, I said it before, the challenge is out there. I think they're ready to accept the challenge. These questions were addressed tonight. I know I have in my notes here that the superintendent or the chairperson, while we still have some viewers on YouTube from public media, to remind the audience of the deadlines coming up, the survey deadlines, Dr. Crowley, your, the the reminder of tomorrow's Zoom meeting, Ms. Crowley. So again, avenues and communication, getting out to the people as best we could, is all I have for my notes after that presentation tonight. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I want to ask a quick question for Ms. Bragg, and I know we're almost done here. But it's really important because parents are relying on our information to make this decision. And I think one of the things they need to know is what would a typical virtual academy a day look like for an elementary school teacher? Like, what what what's that child going to have?
The virtual academy?
Yes, like a third grader who is who chose virtual academy. What is what is that child's day going to look like?
So again, we would assign a Woburn educator who would be teaching that virtual academy, and that teacher would be responsible to teach the curriculum, just like any other third-grade classroom, that would be remote.
And then when would the virtual academy student get specials and?
So that, again, that's something we talked about today.
Right.
In our meeting. And we are looking at the possibility that on Wednesdays and the days that the committee may remember and the public may remember that we set up connection blocks with some of the specialists who had extra time in their schedule because of the doubling of some of our specials in the past, in the recent past. So that those times may become blocked that would allow for virtual academy students at the elementary level to participate in specials.
Thank you. So like, the day could open with a morning meeting, and they would do all of the kind of welcoming stuff, do a lesson.
Absolutely.
Maybe send the child off by by herself to do a lesson, come back, and and then do the do it kind of like that.
Right. And it also may include some small breakout groups for some intervention, depending on how assessments may show the may identify the needs that students have.
Is that similar to what a Wednesday looks like in the hybrid program?
Similar to what a Wednesday.
Like in a Wednesday, so I guess, could you describe what a Wednesday looks like?
It is, it is very similar to that.
[inaudible].
The Wednesday in the hybrid model is, it's a, it's a morning period that they're directly with their classroom teacher. And the afternoon is more asynchronous, working independently, maybe watching videos that the teachers have created and doing work related to those, or reading an article or a story and and writing maybe assigned from work that was done in person. So yes, it could be very similar, but the virtual academy teacher would have them, I I sort of equate it to like, if we went full remote.
Yeah.
And the teacher has the student for the whole day.
Yeah.
It's more that type of thing. With students being respectful, that we don't want a student sitting on a laptop.
Right.
From first thing in the morning till the end of the day, there would be times that they would go, they'd get breaks. They would get tech breaks, they would get lunch breaks. They would also have the opportunity to, if I'm working with five students to, on a specific skill, the other students would be offline, independently doing some work.
Right. So to the extent possible, they would have that, oh, I have Mrs. so-and-so, and she's my teacher, and I see her every day.
Correct. And that's one of the reasons for us not to switch students back and forth if the district were to go full. So that they their teacher would be their their virtual academy teacher would be their teacher for the entire time.
Awesome. Okay. I think that helps a lot, and I really appreciate the way you answered that question.
Thank you.
That was Exhibit A. If you wanted to.
Let's stop it.
Just have an explanation about reach out, outreach, maybe, oh.
What?
The grab and go, so I know that the USDA, the DESI is trying to get a waiver from USDA so everybody gets it for free.
Yes.
In the meantime, how are they going to do the process of paying if they're taking the grab and go lunch?
That's a very, very, very good question. And what we're what we're thinking right now is maybe some some system where when the attendance is taken and the student chooses to have a lunch, that roster, if you will, is going to be sent to the cafeteria, and cafeteria workers will be able to punch in. Obviously, if it's a free free lunch, it doesn't make any difference. But full and reduced, they'll be able to punch in and charge the account. As you indicate, we are trying to get, DESI has has put in for a waiver for the USDA. Not sure how that's going to go. Some days it looks good, some days it doesn't. But at this point, we're planning that the waiver will not be extended.
Okay. And for sanitizer, can the kids, I guess this probably will be building-based, but the kids, can they have their own at their desk?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
So that is not that cross contamination. And symptomatic kids at a at the bus stop? I saw in the plan that they would not be able to get on the bus, and the parent would have to take them home and call the nurse. What if the parent is not there? I don't know what this question is.
Let's take them to the school.
Yeah, so it's a very good question. I mean, we. I think we'll talk to John Devine.
Yeah.
Who's the, you know, the bus company. Probably put some protocol in place with the driver.
Yep.
To be observant about students when they get on the bus. The expectation, particularly at the younger grade, is is that our parents are there. So.
And how would you know anybody's asympt- how would you know somebody's symptomatic at a bus stop is a bus driver?
Coughing.
Yeah.
Well, I'm just quoting from here.
She's a nurse.
So I can just tell by looking at someone and they have. Let's hope parents are paying attention to.
Well, I mean, I, yeah, I guess I.
Oh, you know what? It does say for students, K through five, a parent or caregiver must be present when child boards the bus.
Right. That's, you know, and this is a community effort. We need, we need families to help us here. You know, so that, we'll do our best, but we hope, and we'll, if we need to do family outreach, we will.
All right. And I think, yeah, that's it. Thank you. Okay. Dr. Wells?
Yeah, maybe if the administration just talk about outreach to parents that having new kids going into the system, what's being done, like for new kindergarten students and things like that, to acclimate them to the school.
So so we are going to have, even during that 10-day window, some orientation, meet and greet with smaller groups of kids coming through at various times, with, at all the transitional points too, not just kindergarten, but ninth grade, for example. And I know that they were doing it at the Joyce and the Kennedy this week.
Okay. Thank you.
I still have to.
I apologize because I know everyone needs to get home. But are we changing any attendance policies in terms of credit tied to attendance, given that we're encouraging people to stay home if they have any type of symptoms?
Are we changing our attendance policy?
So in terms of, you know, I know there's a discussion of of high school losing credit if they go over a certain number of of days out. Are we looking at changing that, given that we are actively encouraging people to stay home?
We're probably going to have to address that.
Yeah, I was going to say, we haven't yet, but it certainly is something we will need to look at because it will be beyond their control.
Right.
Okay.
A question was regarding cleaning, and I'm not sure who it is that I would address this to. But we have, I guess they're called fobbers, things that they.
Yes.
Do you have those in place and ready to go?
Fortunately, we had those in in February. We bought them before we knew that we needed them. And so.
All right. So any more questions? All right. What?
Get superintendent's deadline dates from the community.
So, yes, deadlines.
Yeah, just thank you, Ms. Marren. So if folks are still listening, the commitment form that we're asking for is due by Monday so that we can start to roster children and match them with their teachers. And that, as I started tonight's meeting, talking about anxiety, that may alleviate a lot of anxiety if if students know who their teachers are going to be and where they're going to be placed. And so, again, Monday is the deadline for that. Thank you.
Okay. And tomorrow, we have a Zoom meeting where the superintendent will attempt his best he can to answer live questions. I will be moderating that that discussion. And I will just simply try to look at questions in the chat feature. We will not be there all day. I'm thinking of about an hour, do the best we can to have people, have the superintendent answer questions as they as they pop up, to the best of his ability. So that's tomorrow. And I think everybody got a letter with the Zoom ID?
Yep.
11:00 AM.
11:00 AM tomorrow. So in about.
Yeah. So.
Switched Greek.
I think it's time to adjourn. Do I have a motion?
No, no, Madam Chair.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
This meeting is adjourned.